Welcome to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is September 28, 2021. It's 9:30 a.m., and this meeting is hereby called to order. And I'll at this time ask the clerk if you'd please call the roll and establish quorum.
Yes, good morning, Supervisors Desmond, Kennedy, Natoli, Serna, Frost.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, October 1 at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14.
Great, and I'm going to ask my good friend Supervisor Natoli if you would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Guess I'm a little bit disshuffled this morning. Good morning, everyone. Well, a lot has happened since our last meeting, and I want to especially thank Supervisor Natoli for coming out to Orangevale and helping us celebrate the ribbon, grand ribbon cutting of the Orangevale Library, which is, and we also had Honorable Assemblyman Roger Nilo and former Supervisor Roberta McGlashan came out to celebrate with us, and it was a really fun, fun dedication to our new community room in Orangevale, and it was just a great day. So, thank you Supervisor Natoli for coming out.
I'd say thank you to you and congratulations to the Orangevale community. You had Rotarians there and friends of the library and certainly Rifka Sass and a whole lot of folks, and been an effort over many, many decades, and I think as you reflected, Supervisor McGlashan and Nilo both, and I know that Supervisor Cox and maybe Supervisor String over the years have worked on.
Yes, and I thought it was really fun that they were there to tell their part. We got to hear some real fun stories about Supervisor McGlashan and how she used to go down and holler at the legislature trying to get money.
When Roger Nilo was there.
Yeah, when Roger Nilo was there, which it was fun to reminisce with them.
But a great community room, and that facility will be well utilized, and again, thank you for your leadership on that as well.
Thank you for your support. I also wanted to share that the Capital Air Show 2021 was amazing. I know I went out for a while, I think when I was out there, there were over 30,000 people there, and I guess the air show was established in 2004. It's been around for quite some time, but we didn't get to see it last year, so everybody was truly excited to be there, and Sacramento County is proud to be one of the anchor sponsors for the air show, along with Rancho Cordova, City of Rancho Cordova, and so I just wanted to thank their board and the, all the staff that made such a huge event so great, and thank you for making all of us feel welcome out there at the air show.
And I'd like to just add, thank you to Deputy Gergich for helping me find my car.
I know, it was the CEO of Cars. So, and I also, with that, I'm going to go ahead and go into our public announcement, but I wanted to just make a brief comment about, because in our last meeting, we had asked if we could find a way to create more equity for those who are disabled, and I want to thank Dr. Cassiri and the clerk staff for working with us. I, I still have, you know, I'm still hoping that we can come up with something a little better as the cold weather comes, but I know everyone's working really hard, and I want to just let the people know who come and make public comments at the board, that no matter whether your public comment is in person, or on Zoom, or on the phone, or via email, your voice really does matter, and every single one of us is listening, and so I want to thank you for engaging and being involved, and for your patience with us as we're working through this extraordinary time, and, and so with that, I, I will also go ahead and read the announcement. "The Board of Supervisors encourages public participation during the meeting in person, telephonically, or in writing, in compliance with the directives of the County, State, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention (CDC). This meeting is broadcast live and open to in-person attendance. The county requires a face mask or face shield while inside the county's administrative building, during which the county, during which includes the board chambers and hearing rooms, and recommends social distancing. Meeting procedures are subject to change based on the recommended public health safety guidelines. Public comments will be taken in the order of the person, in-person comments, and then comments by phone. If you are making a public comment in person, a face mask or shield is required, and social distancing is recommended, while inside the chambers or the hearing room 1 and 2. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis inside chambers and overflow seating, and is available in the hearing rooms 1 and 2. If there are no seats available inside the chambers or overflow room, please form a line in the designated area and wait for your turn to make a public comment. Please complete a speaker request form and give it to the clerk staff. A separate speaker request form is required for each agenda item or topic that is not on the posted agenda. When I open the public comments, I will call three names at a time. When you hear your name, please start walking towards the podium inside the chambers and wait for your turn to make a comment. If you're making public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500, and follow the prompts to be placed in the queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along and determine when it's best time to call or be placed in the queue to make a public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. I will ask the clerk to transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. Members of the public will be given two minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful that the public comment procedures are to avoid, that the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. If you need an accommodation pursuant to Americans with Disability Act for the medical or other reasons, please see the clerk staff for assistance and contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.net. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures." All right, next item, please.
For your consent matters, items 1 through 22, the only announcement that I have is for item 12, you're adopting an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.90, Section 2.90400 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the Home Detention Program and Pre-Trial Release Supervision Program. You waive reading on this on September 14.
Okay. I have Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I'd like to ask some questions about item 4, and then make a suggestion about item 20.
On item 4, this is the retroactive authority to amend the agreement with Deloitte and Touche through February 28, 2022, and increase the maximum value by $550,000 for a not-to-exceed amount of $1,165,000 for assistance in planning, tracking, and reporting to use of federal American Rescue Plan funds cost.
Great, thank you. I noticed that almost all of my colleagues are in the, in the queue, so I don't know if there's others that had questions or concerns about item 4, wanted to speak to it, but I, I just wanted to say publicly kind of what I said during my briefing. I think it's important to underscore, because we did have a bit of a lively conversation last time, the general subject of Deloitte was in front of this board in terms of the deliverables that they've provided thus far, and the cost of those services. So, I know that the CEO's office was good enough to respond to the, to the board as a whole, in terms of giving us a little further detail on the scope and, and the nature of the deliverables thus far, for the first, I believe it was 600,000 that was appropriated from, from ARPA for those services under the guise of it being part of the administrative necessity for understanding how best to set a process for, for appropriating ARPA funds. Again, I just, I'm still kind of floored by the expense involved, and when I consider that in light of what I've seen thus far from, from Deloitte, and this is not to be punitive against them or critical necessarily, but what I've seen so far has been kind of very general. We heard last time that there was a dearth of socioeconomic information that came with kind of their preliminary conclusions about priority, funding priorities, which I think we still need to drill down on significantly, and quite frankly, some of the, the early conclusions that were drawn from the presentation that we received from Deloitte kind of confirmed for me kind of what, what, at least I, I kind of understood already. So, it, it feels a little frustrating to, to see the continuation of, you know, expending hundreds of thousands on a deliverable or set of deliverables that kind of confirm what we generally understand. For instance, number one issue, homelessness. Uh huh, yeah, we, you know, it's, it's, there's not a meeting that goes by where it's not the subject of a good amount of conversation and deliberation by this board. So, I just, I just want to leave it there, I guess. I, I feel a bit uneasy about this, especially given the fact that, you know, this is the first expenditure of that first tranche from the federal treasury that we're, that we're using, and it's, it's not incidental. So, I don't know if there's others that wish to speak to it, but I'll just leave it there and, and look to my colleagues to see if there's any other concerns about, about this issue, before we go on to item 20.
Yeah, I mean, I'll chime in, I think I'm up there. That's one of the reasons I punched in as well. You know, it's, it's really difficult to determine with a great degree of certainty whether or not this is worth it, since we haven't seen anything, and, but, you know, I am concerned in, in budget creep, and so I will, you know, say that I agree with Mr. Serna, and I don't know, I mean, this is, I mean, it's, it's like death by a thousand cuts, you know, is, is this the last week we, we plan on seeing this, or, I mean, are we going to see more of this in the future?
So, I can address that. We are in the process of developing bandwidth internally, because this is going to be a multi-year process, and we need this extra little help to get us to the point where we can bring forth to you some limited-term positions. There's a lot of work. I know you're not seeing the outcome of it, but staff are really feeling the help and assistance in managing this, but yes, this should be the last.
Okay, and I appreciate that, because, I mean, I will say, because you're right, we don't see it, I'm a little skeptical right now, so hopefully I'll be proved wrong.
Yeah, and others may want to chime in here, but I would just add to that, too, and that, at least, I'm, I'm getting questioned by labor groups, by constituents about this, this ongoing expense, and it would be helpful if, I'm not sure who amongst your, your team is best equipped to do it, but to communicate maybe a little more clearly and frequently about how you see the value of this service, because right now, we're kind of left with an agenda item that says another, you know, $550,000 and $51,000 retroactively, and I don't really have a great answer, because I, you know, I don't have anything other than, you know, kind of a trust us moment to, to share. So, I'm hopeful that, that messaging could be something you give some thought to.
Yes, we can do that.
Ma'am Chair, if I could, oh.
Yes.
You were punched up first, go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate that, super. And I just want to, I want to echo also the, the concerns of my, my colleagues up here, and, you know, I spoke about this a little while yesterday, and I was, I was very surprised to see it almost double, and so I guess my question is to you, maybe explain a little bit, what, what did we not anticipate in the original scope of work that we all approved a few months ago for the Deloitte contract?
Well, primarily, it was time. I mean, we are still working on all of the things that were in the original scope, and now we're heading in towards project scoping, you know, once we're coming back to you next week with some recommendations on the allocations, and then we have to really dive into scoping out projects, and they will be assisting us with that as well, and then in the meantime, we'll be working on internal bandwidth so that we can take that on ourselves.
Okay, and I assume so, I mean, but the original contract, I mean, we were led to believe that they, it would be all-inclusive of the scoping and everything else when we first approved that, or?
Well, it was, it was a short-term contract, and so we did know it would be short, and we internally didn't realize how much additional support we would need.
Okay.
It's, this is bigger, more complex than we anticipated.
Okay, and thank you, I appreciate that, and I, too, would like to certainly hear more back on, on the specifics on what we're getting for this additional investment.
Yes.
In this, and I hope it, we get the right return on that investment, you know, that we are able to administer these, these funds in the most efficient, most effective way for the county.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, thank you, Ma'am Chair. I guess a couple things, and it was a short-term contract, and it was a lot of money, and I guess it was a lot of work, but I want to, I do want to say that one of the things, and again, I haven't seen this deliverable, and we're good, this is going to be on a task order, and, and certainly you've outlined some of that in the staff report, and I know in our briefing yesterday, we talked about the amount of money, but I guess one of the things that I guess I'm still anticipating is we have the tranche of 150 million and the promise of another 150 million, but that's not the sum total of what this county would expect to draw upon, and where is it these other funding streams coming out of ARPA that, and whether they relate to housing, to social services, to infrastructure, to health services, whatever they are, that, because that was one of the expectations, I guess I took away from the first contract and would have for this one beyond helping us begin to set up, you know, systems for tracking the, you know, the disposition of funds and, and all that, but, and again, you may have to bring on additional staff to, in a limited-term fashion, whatever, to assist with that, but where is that expertise being applied? I guess I want to see, and maybe it hasn't all been done yet, but that, to me, is important, because that's the value added. If we spend a million and a half dollars, of all of them, we spend the entirety of this, and we authorized the request today, how much more money will we be able to target and then be able to, because of Deloitte's assistance to this county, be able to at least compete for? And I haven't seen anything in the documentation thus far, except for their presentation here in August that said, well, you know, there's other funding streams, and, you know, we're going to, going to help you, but they've exhausted the money, so they're going to charge us more to do that, and so, and I guess that's a very important piece, because that is the value added. If you spend this, you're going to, not only, you're maybe eligible, which can be identified, you can get in early, you can get your submittals in to compete against folks nationally or in the state, but I don't see that embodied at least in any real way that says, you know, there's potentially another half, you know, $500 million that this county could, could qualify for in some of these other categories that are priority categories, and so, in addition to what we already have on deposit. So, could you help with that a little bit?
Yeah, so they did, Deloitte did develop a tool that identifies all of the other funding sources and what kinds of activities they can be used for. We have, we staff have been working primarily on being able to launch the 100, spending for the 150 million we have, but we are in conversation about all of those other funding sources and looking at that, and we can bring something back to you on that.
Well, and the reason why I raise that point, too, is that, as you said, as early as next week, in fact, later today, we'll be talking about at least, you know, some of the allocation methodology, is that before we spend the dollars that we have on deposit and match it with anything that we do here locally, I would want to know, as, as early as possible, I think this board will want to know, and you, too, and county staff, that we've got this other opportunity, so before we take the one-time dollars that are available to us and dedicate it over here, or even spend it, to know that there may be some other opportunity to either use matching resources, or to draw upon specifics that we know we'd be very competitive in those categories, and that's going to be key, because we, the clock's ticking on the monies we have available, and yet there, I assume it's ticking on things that are available more broadly in the legislation, but I guess I don't know that outline, they, they talked about a little bit at the podium.
So, one of the things in the project scoping that we are going to be working with them on is ensuring that whatever we bring forward to you for a project with our money is not more appropriately drawn down from another funding source, and they are going to be assisted.
So, they're going to be helping with that.
Yes.
So, they'll help us track that, match that, but also then, you know, make sure we don't miss deadlines.
Yes.
That relate to monies that are, you know, available in, in the pots of money, because there may be some other state money that's, you know, flows down.
And their, their scope does not address the state money. This is purely focused on the federal money. We are, however, paying close attention to other state funding sources that are available, so we're paying very close attention to that, to ensure that we don't use this money on something that state funding or other federal funding can be used for.
I don't know if this is a fair question or not, this conjunction, because you may not know, and they may not know, but what is the potential out there? Is, is it on the order of magnitude of tens of millions, or potentially hundreds of millions of dollars that we could competitively be in the running for?
I don't know the answer to that question. We can find out for you.
Well, maybe Deloitte, and with the work they did already, could tell us that, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, again, to me, that's my primary consideration, is that you invest this early on, yes, it's a large sum of money, and it's double what we started out with, but if that expertise can be brought to bear, so that we bring those dollars to this community, and they're spent here for, you know, priority needs, then, you know, then I think that's a, you know, in my view, that's a, that's a balanced consideration, but if it's just to help you set up an internal system to account for it, we've got folks, even if we have to bring in support folks, that I have full confidence in, that could do those types of tasks, and yes, they might take away from something else they do, but these are one-time opportunities of large magnitude for this community, and my expectation is, is that if they're going to draw on their expertise and help us with our expertise to, to do this, that we're going to benefit in a way that brings more dollars to this community, or at least gives us the potential to compete for those dollars. I'm sure, you know, we'll compete well, because we, you know, we've got the expertise here, and we have the, you know, I think the needs that could justify us receiving those dollars. So, on that basis, I'm prepared to support this today, but that's part of the expectation, I would just state very clearly, and I think that if we get, if we see that and are able to, you know, get return on it, then the investment here, we make here is, is a wise one. If not, then I guess people are going to continue to question, what did we do with the first $600,000, and what are we doing with the next half a million dollars? Thanks.
Before we leave the subject, I do have two more kind of statements or series of questions about, about the subject here, and during our briefing, to recall, I asked about whether or not, given the expense involved in this contract, whether or not the county's going to be protected, whether or not Deloitte will indemnify the county, should they counsel us, advise us, manage a process that, for whatever reason, if we get audited or otherwise find out after the fact that perhaps there was something missed in terms of following the guidance from the treasury, or other, or other rules that we have to follow, do they, do they indemnify the county so that we're held harmless?
So, because the county is not relinquishing decision-making authority to Deloitte, risk management was comfortable with the indemnity language in the agreement that does not expressly protect the county from loss based on advice received. However, risk management believes that the county would still have recourse through the indemnity and insurance provisions, as well as legal remedies, for example, breach of contract.
Okay. That sounds like kind of a blanket, a typical blanket indemnification.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the, the other, the question, the other question that just, just occurred to me, given what Supervisor Natoli just mentioned about, and I agree with him, about the skill sets that I think we all can agree that, that our professionals here in Sacramento County have when it comes to accounting, that if necessary, I mean, I feel very confident that they, they could be doing much of this work. I understand the strain and the stress and the, the push and pull from other obligations, but what I found interesting at the end of the board letter for this item, and what it seems to be typical for other contracts, there's no mention of 71-J. So, do we, was there any conclusion from county council's office, or otherwise, that this does not amount to a possible violation of 71-J based on the fact that we have others in the, in the county who could potentially provide the same services?
I'm going to have to defer to staff as to whether the, in the initial contract, 71-J was, analysis was done. I don't recall, but I would say normally that's how the process would, would be undertaken, so I assume that it was. In this case, I think it's special, it would be considered special services, because the nature and scope of the project is something that the county likely has never undertaken before, so I can get back to you on the specific of the original contract. I don't have it necessarily in front of me, but that is typically how we would approach any contracting, so I would assume that it was done that way here as well.
Yeah, I think, I think if you can check and not just get back to me, but the entire board, that would be helpful.
Right.
Ma'am Chair, can I just, one other question, clarification more than anything else. So, this contract is proposed as for a six-month period, and would expire at that point in time, and on a task order basis, it, it could very well mean that you wouldn't utilize the entirety of what's here. I guess the, kind of, the reverse part of that, though, is, is that, you know, we're six months into, the legislation having been passed, pretty close to it, do we think we're going to know what we need to know in six months, and I guess why the short timeframe? If, in fact, it's a task order, and we don't know certain aspects of this, then why wouldn't we give ourselves more time? Or would you return to the board? Would that be the expectation? If you still needed services from Deloitte as related to some of the tasks that are outlined here, and we didn't have the internal capacity to do that, would you be back? I guess I'm just curious about that, because, you know, I would have thought by now, we would have had a pretty, you know, assuming the federal government issued the guidelines and whatever parameters are there for us to then adhere to, that we'd know that, particularly when they've got deadlines on expenditure of the funds, and, so I guess I'm curious, Anne, what's your thoughts?
So, we're moving into a different phase, and yes, I do think we will be prepared to be finished in six months, and as I said earlier, as we develop internal additional bandwidth with staffing, I think you're right, we have very competent staff in the county who can do this work, and we will be able to transition that to staff.
Okay, so any grants that we would apply for, any competitive processes, we would expect that we're going to do that work.
Yes.
And again, presuming that the second tranche is going to come in May of next year, we're not going to need to do a revisit. We will have done the work that prepares us for what we have on deposit, but what we also would expect to get at least the, the direct allocation for the Coronavirus Recovery Fund, the 300 million total.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, Ma'am Chair.
And then I had item 20.
Item 20 is the Resolution of the County of Sacramento in Support of Afghan Refugees and the People of Afghanistan.
Great, thank you. First, I'd like to applaud and support my, my two colleagues, Supervisors Kennedy and Desmond, for bringing this thoughtful resolution before the board. I think it is appropriate, I think it's captured how many of us feel about our responsibilities and obligations to those that have, that are fleeing the Taliban in Afghanistan and and obligations to those that have, that are fleeing the Taliban in Afghanistan, and so I want to start with that statement of appreciation. I would offer a suggestion to the authors that because during final budget, we did have some express deliberation and consideration of a contingency reserve, I think that's the right language, for $5 million, which is not incidental, for refugee services, expecting that the county is going to have probably a fairly prominent role in terms of providing services for north of 2,500 expected refugees, at least in the near term. So, I would like to suggest that between the morning session and the afternoon session, perhaps Supervisors Kennedy and Desmond consider an additional whereas, or perhaps even an additional resolve that acknowledges that the county has not only, or the county board has not only deliberated on the subject, but has already appropriated resources with the expectation that we're going to fulfill those roles and responsibilities that relates, as it relates to Afghan refugees.
Can I interject one comment on that? If the maker of the resolution is inclined to do that, we could always just write it and add it to the agenda, or the resolution after approval, instead of continuing it. I mean, does that make sense? If you want to add an additional clause, I don't think we need to take it back necessarily and re-
That's not the way we've done it before. In fact, last, the last board meeting, we did exactly that.
Well, so I'll break the logjam here, I'll be glad to work on it between now and the afternoon.
Great.
And can I speak to it now?
Yeah.
Okay. I do want to, you know, thank Supervisor Desmond for joining me on this, I want to thank you for your words, Supervisor Serna. I also, it speaks for itself, I do think that you have a good idea there and be glad to work on it. The one thing I also want to make sure of, though, is that this doesn't just make us feel good because we're doing something the right thing, but we actually send this to our congressional delegation, Mr. Garamendi, Ms. Matsui, and Ami Barra, as well as Senators Feinstein and Padilla, because we are calling out here asking for our federal leaders to step up, so if we could just make sure, whether it's through Natasha or whoever, that it gets delivered, that would be fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Oh, were you down?
I'm done.
Okay. So, did you have, I think, did you have other comments, Supervisor Kennedy?
No, that was it.
Okay. Supervisor Desmond?
Can I just make a comment real quick on item 20? Thank you, ma'am chair, and just also want to thank Supervisor Kennedy for his leadership in initiating the resolution, and I obviously agree with it wholeheartedly and reeling it to our members of our federal delegation. There's a lot of uncertainty about this, about this issue, about the resources that will come with our new arrivals to Sacramento County, and a great deal of concern about whether or not they will have the resources they need to not only resettle here, but to thrive and succeed and take advantage of the opportunities that they will have in this country. So, I also agree, I think that's a good idea, we'll include that, and I'm happy to work with Supervisor Kennedy to bring it back with the new language later on. Thank you.
Thank you, and you also have the floor if you have other comments.
Thank you, ma'am chair, I would like to make a comment on item 9, please.
Item 9 is the Contract for the Morse Avenue Sidewalk Improvements, bids to be received on October 28th, '21. The environmental document is a negative declaration.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I don't see anybody from our Department of Transportation here, I don't believe, but I know Mr. Hartwig is there, so I-
We may have someone on the phone from the department, I can double-check.
Okay.
If there is someone on the phone from Transportation, could you please identify yourself?
Yes, Ron, the Cary Director of Transportation.
Thank you, Ron.
Terrific. Thank you, Ron. So, I'm in support of this item. Obviously, this is an area of my district that is in dire need of sidewalks, as are a lot of areas in my district, District 3, that are, that were roads originally designed without sidewalks when it was a much more rural area, and as it has evolved and become a lot more densely populated and a lot more vehicles traveling on these roadways, a lot of times pedestrians walking on these roadways without sidewalks are exposed to dangerous traffic conditions, and I've seen that firsthand also in my prior world in the California Highway Patrol. And so, my question is to you, Ron, is I think you'd mentioned once before that there may have been a, more of a comprehensive sidewalk plan in Sacramento County in the unincorporated areas, and I mean, I know this is HSIP-funded from the feds through Caltrans, but, you know, we have active transportation grants, safe routes to schools, CDBG funding. Is there a master, or I guess a comprehensive, plan for sidewalks throughout the county and the unincorporated roadways with an accompanying kind of designation of what funding might be available or most appropriate, or funding we might be pursuing for certain segments?
Yes, again, Ron, the Cary Director of Transportation, we do have a pedestrian master plan that is being actually currently revised as part of the active transportation plan. We're working on an update to it now.
Okay, great. I just want to let you know, I have a big interest in this and look forward to having additional conversations with you, and creative ways we can get funding for some of these areas, you know, sooner rather than later where we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, ma'am chair, I'd like to speak to item 2. I'm going to ask to continue this for a week, but if the clerk could call it, please.
Sure. Item 2 is the Request to Approve a Property Tax Revenue Exchange Agreement with the City of Galt for the Annexation of the Galt Island Area.
And just by way of background, certainly it's included in the staff report, this is the annexation of an island on the southern part of the county and the southern part of the city of Galt. There has been long-time opposition to the annexation of some of those properties, many of which are zoned, AR-1, AR-2, AgRes-1, 2, and 5, and there's some RD-2 on Cornell Road. I know that the city has taken this up, and residents and property owners, some who live in the city and some who live in, currently in the unincorporated area, have opposed this. This is not the first time this matter certainly has come up. This has now advanced us under the guise of the tax sharing agreement. I spoke with, certainly with our county executive and with Ms. Drain yesterday, and got some additional background information. I also spoke with the city manager in Galt, and talked with one of the residents who has been a long time in their expression of concern about being forced to annex into the city, and whether it be any city, but in this case, the city of Galt. So, I wanted to note that I think most of the issues have been addressed as it relates to any requirements for, these folks are on their own private wells, are on private septic, some of them have outbuildings, they have, you know, properties that are, you know, in a rural condition in most cases, and a number of them have animals. And the concern that I have, I think, needs to be memorialized, and I did get a response from the city manager, I want to thank him for getting back to me yesterday afternoon, but I need some further clarification, and I think the residents do, because what was reported back was that they alluded to a staff report that went to the city council a year ago, October, and talk about legal non-conforming uses, but the response that I got yesterday is relates to, and I'm concerned about the piece where, I know there's folks that have horses, they have goats, chickens. It says this allows current residents to maintain livestock and animals that are currently owned and cared for on these properties. As we all know, animals, not unlike people, have a lifespan, and I'm concerned that once these properties are annexed into the city, that they may not be able to continue those practices that they, you know, traditionally had as rural properties, residential permits, agricultural uses, with some exceptions on these properties, and recognizing they're going to be, going into a municipal setting, and so I guess I'd like, if we can do some outreach, and again, I talked to the city manager as to what that means as it relates to legally non-conforming uses. If it says, if you have a horse and the horse expires, that you can no longer have a horse on your property, or if you have, you know, poultry, and, you know, again, and you want to replace that, and so I'm concerned about that. I know the residents, again, have, I think, accepted the fact that they're going to, you know, come into the city of Galt, be an annexation that follows this agreement, and so I guess I'd like to put this over for a week so we can get further clarification. I appreciate the effort that went in yesterday after I spoke with the county executive's office and certainly with the city manager. I think it's a key point for folks, and that they can retain the livestock that they have and they can replace that livestock, and I think that will go a long ways to addressing the concerns. I would just note that when this came before the city council a year ago, there are 26 properties in the area beyond the development property that is proposing to build a new subdivision in a portion of this annexation of Fairway Oaks. There were 10 residents out of 26 that opposed, and I don't know if they were all property owners, but they were certainly area residents, and so there's no vote, this required, the law changed, it used to be that there was an inhabited area, folks could have a chance to vote whether they wanted to join an annexation of whatever might be proposed, and so I would ask, we put this over for a week and we get some further clarity around the keeping and retaining of animals on these properties, and if we can get that addressed, I'm prepared then to support the agreement. So, I would ask, we could put this over till next Tuesday, if that should give us sufficient time to get that iron out. So, I'd ask to continue item 2, too, next Tuesday. And I also want to just note, if we could, on item 13.
Item 13 is the Authorization to Retroactively Apply for the Confluence Regional Partnership Program Grant Funding from the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District and the Sacramento Area Sewer District in the amount of $110,000 for the period of September 1 through August 31, 2022.
Okay, and I know we had correspondence at the last meeting, and Supervisor Serna had asked to continue, and I supported that, and we both had an opportunity to speak with sheriff's representatives about that, and it's clear, and I certainly support the action as part of the consent calendar today. So, those are my comments, and I would ask that we continue item 2, too, next Tuesday, October 5.
And so, for item number 2, we would need to take a vote on that?
I'm moving continue to next Tuesday.
Okay.
And we have a motion by Supervisor Natoli and a second by Supervisor Serna.
Please vote. Unanimous vote.
Thank you. So, we have, we are pulling item 20 to 2:00 p.m. and pulling item 3 for discussion after vote on consent, so at this time, I'll entertain, oh, we do have some public comments for consent.
We do have public comments for consent, and I believe for item 3, it was just so that Mr. Dye could address the board and thank the board and so forth.
I'm sorry, yes, it was the item number 20 to 2:00 p.m. Yes, sorry, I said that wrong.
Okay, so for item 3, this is the Authorization to Appoint Ethan Dye as Director of Human Assistance.
We're excited.
Beyond. Chair Frostman.
I just want to say, we have really appreciated, I personally have appreciated all of your help over the past year, and you certainly stepped into that position at a challenging time, and I guess Ann Edwards knew the right person to pick because you have done justice to it, and so we thank you and congratulate you.
Thank you. Chair Frost, members of the board, Ethan Dye, Acting Director, Department of Human Assistance. I'd like to thank all the leaders and mentors that I've had in the course of my career, with special acknowledgement to Ms. Ann Edwards, who I have had the privilege to work with and learn from over the last six years. I would like to thank my leadership team, the supervisors and the staff of the Department of Human Assistance, who work day in and day out to improve the lives of the neediest in our community. I would like to thank my wife Carmela, who could not be here today, for taking this life's journey with me. Without her support and her encouragement through the years, I'm not sure how much of this would have been, would have been possible. Last, but certainly not least, I would like to thank you, the board, for placing your trust in me to lead the Department of Human Assistance, a department responsible for issuing public benefits for over 582,000 Sacramentoans and welcoming those who we do not yet serve. I value public service, collaboration, and the significant contributions made by staff, peers, and our stakeholders. I fully understand, recognize, and appreciate how vital the work of our department is and for the success of those in our community, the county of Sacramento. Again, I thank you for this humbling opportunity.
Thank you, Ethan. Did you want to say a couple words, or county executive, Ann Edwards?
Yes, I would, thank you. As Mr. Dye indicated, I've worked with him for six years, and from the moment I met him six years ago, I knew he had great potential. There was nothing that I ever assigned to him that he didn't do with professionalism and grace and compassion, and what I know most about him are his values. He is very committed to doing the right thing with integrity all the time, and that just speaks volumes about him. He's well-respected within the department and the community, and is committed to all the things that we've been talking about here around equity and making sure that those in need get the services that they need and deserve, so really happy to have you on board. Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann, and we have every, every single board member up here, so wants to say something, we'll start with Supervisor Natoli.
Have I punched up? Okay, I will say something. Congratulations, Ethan. Appreciate it.
Your name was there.
That must be an assumption, because I think there was three in front of me, but at any rate, I would offer my congratulations and thank you for your work. I know that big challenges lie ahead in this community, and certainly leadership from the Department of Human Assistance, and all that, all the partners that we have in this community, and certainly the diversity of needs, diversity of populations and people that we serve, and the challenges that come with doing that in a way that, you know, takes into account people's, you know, situations, conditions, circumstances, but also hopefully offers them the help and assistance that allows them to, you know, have a quality of life that would be, you know, satisfactory to any one of us, but hopefully helps them, you know, move to a point where they can, you know, better themselves and support families and such, and so, again, there's a broad reach, as you said, when you have, take more than half a million of the county's million and a half residents, and so I, you know, I believe you're up to the task and offer my congratulations, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, ma'am chair, and Ethan, I just, congratulations to you. I am, I'm very happy that you're in this position permanently. In my short tenure on the board, you have really demonstrated to me that you're a dedicated public servant with an eye towards compassion and addressing the inequities, the disparities we have in Sacramento County and helping those most in need, and so I just really appreciate your time and your responsiveness to my office and educating me on things. A quick story, I went out on a tour of my district, looking at some issues, some challenging issues with housing and homeless encampments with Bruce Wagstaff and Emily, the head of our homeless initiatives, and Ethan, and we went, and I wanted to go look at Chicken Ranch Slough, an area under Arden Way, that is, you know, is blocked up and there had been a homeless encampment there before, and so we all got out of the car, and, you know, we're all kind of standing around the bank of this, of this slough, you know, looking down there, oh yeah, you know, there's some problems. Well, Ethan just dove right in and went down this embankment.
Literally?
He did, crawling over the rocks, and even, a couple of sheriff's deputies were there like, geez, what is this guy doing? I mean, they couldn't believe it. So, that just shows me that you're someone who's willing to get your hands dirty and lead from the front, Ethan, and it was, that was, that was just really terrific and a demonstration of the kind of person you are, and just congratulations, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, likewise.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have nearly as entertaining a story as that, but I did want to speak up, because, you know, you have big shoes to follow, and, you know, and that's a tough, a tough tall order, but I will tell you that since Ann has taken over his interim nine months ago, I have found it to be completely seamless, and I will tell you that our office has really enjoyed a very open communication with your department, and I give you a lot of credit for that as well, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ethan.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to working with you.
Likewise, thank you.
Okay, we do have some public comment on several items on the agenda, and I'm not sure if they're on the phone or- sure if they're on the phone or in chambers.
You have some speaker cards. And then we also have, we have folks in the queue for item 3, 4, 16, and 20.
So we'll start with this speaker cards. Let's see, one of these is for off agenda, and we will address that in a few minutes. So we'll start with Blanca Hurtado for item number four, 29, and 40.
Okay, she's not in the building.
Okay, she may.
She's not in the.
She might call in. So, okay, we'll go to the phones.
Okay, could you please transfer the first caller for item three, please? Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. Good morning, everyone. I am not sure where to start. I'm calling on behalf of many community members who are deeply concerned, deeply disturbed, I would even say, about what just, what we just witnessed with item number three. I don't know, Ethan, personally, but I do know that, the little that I do know, I see values reflected in actions. And I've seen, I mean, the decisions that have been made by DHA, by even Ann, when she was Director of DHA, chose to work with the sheriffs to criminalize and surveil poor communities of color in Sacramento County. So not only did the public get no say, I mean, I'm wondering if, you were all congratulating him before public comment was even heard on this item. So I don't know if this is even worth my breath, but just out of care for my community, I just need to express our concern, not only for this appointment, but for the future appointments in the county. I don't, this decision does not reflect racial equity, does not reflect health equity. I don't know if you all are aware, but Mr. Dye was a sheriff's deputy before coming to DHA. And the experience that you bring with you, the life experience, or the lack of life experience, informs the decisions that you make. And the Department of Human Assistance serves about a quarter of the county and predominantly women and people of color. And this is another white, okay, this is another white man serving communities of color. And I just, I'm just shocked by this decision. And the, to decrease the jail population, we have to move all departments away from punitive practices. And the Department of Human Assistance has been.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Sure. So again, this raises really important questions about the hiring processes going on right now in the county with the Public Safety and Justice Agency. What's, you know, if these processes go forward.
Can you please wrap up your comments, please?
Sure. I'm just really concerned, and I know a lot of other people are, and I'm disappointed.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next caller, I understand, is calling for items two and four.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and transfer the caller, please.
They'll have two minutes for each one.
Yes, ma'am. Hi, caller. I understand that you have comments for items two and four.
Correct.
Okay, and so you'll have two minutes for each item, okay?
Right. Thank you. Appreciate that. You know, I have to say, and I couldn't agree more with the previous caller before this of just how anti-competitive this hiring appears to be, and just how so many of you were ready to just sign off on this guy without even bothering to like, talk with people in DHA about how bad this is, like, you know, about how this guy might operate. Because from what I've heard, he's like, he's not very popular within DHA itself. And this is a really important hire. I wanted, I've been giving this new CEO, this county CEO, the benefit of doubt for a while now, that she, like, that Ann would actually take the lessons learned from that Bill Zera and bring in, and actually change up her practices, especially around the hiring practices and the county culture that was fostered under Nav. But I'm, with these, this new hire, without, like, really having an open competitive bid for the position, or, like, as well as the contracting services with Deloitte, it can, like, I continue to have my mistrust validated. Because DHA spends millions in hiring sheriff deputies to protect DHA locations, and like, this was, like, this is, it really just cut, like, this is really important work that I don't feel has any real, like, racial equity or health equity lends to. We're just continuing to contract services out to the sheriffs because we have a bunch of sheriff sycophants and people that are friends with the sheriff's, like, the sheriff's departments, who will, of course, throw them more money when they already receive the lion's share of the county's six-plus-billion-dollar budget. And on top of that, we can, like.
Can you please wrap up in 10 seconds?
Sure. I thought I had, I was talking to both, like, the two different items, but I guess I will.
Yeah, you can keep going. I can just restart it if you'd like.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, sure. I'll just stop and restart it. Go ahead.
Great. Yeah, like, DHA's close collaboration with sheriff on homeless services and outreach work is inappropriate for service delivery, not to mention, like, building trust and serving people in a trauma-informed manner. Because let's be real, we have a systemic, like, we have systemic injustice that has been perpetrated and trauma created against so many community members, particularly black, brown, and indigenous community people, like, community of color, communities of color. And it's really just sad and also infuriating to see how we continue to just do business as usual, not really changing up much of anything, looking outside of the county, which is still steeped within this culture that Nav fostered. It doesn't go away overnight, just, or just with the change of one position. It takes time, years of time. And I, and so far, I'm still not seeing this. And the same, like, and it's still to confirm with this contract. You have community partners, community organizations that are doing this work for free, already engaging with members of the community, and not one of them is really consulted to do the work that you're, that Deloitte is being tasked with, with by more than a million dollars. Why are we hiring a third party that even the CEO has a direct link to through her family and thinking that's okay? You all are right to question, like, question why we're spending so much money on this. You have county staff that can do this work already, and it was, and Ann admitted to that. You are right to ask the question of that. And then there are already community organizations, like People's Budget Sacramento, that is already out there surveying community members, like, determining what their needs are. And we're going to continue doing this work.
You have 15 seconds.
So I'm really tired of seeing the business as usual because it doesn't, it feels like no one in this county, in this room, has learned the lessons from COVID or really is paying attention to the back inequities that were created from past administrations. All I see is a continued business as usual and the go-along-to-get-along culture that was
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Really get your shit together, people, because I'm not seeing a lick of difference, a lick of change right now in your decision making. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so can you send the next caller? And I believe this is for item four. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Sure. My name is Kula Konik, and I'm a resident of District 3. You know, similar to other callers, it's just, I just want to say that, you know, it's in good faith that the county wanted to do things differently. You know, just off top, they wouldn't have hired Deloitte to do the community survey. You know, instead would have looked at, you know, other consultants that do this type of, you know, racial and cultural, racial equity work. But then, after seeing the deep problems of the survey, you know, that it was done online in English, there was no context as to what ARPA was for folks. And then, of course, there being no demographic information collected, which is why later today, we're going to be discussing giving up the fund equally instead of equitably. But I would have, that, after you saw that, there would have been some changes. I remember Supervisor Natoli at that meeting, and I quote, said, "This is short of what we need to make a decision here." And so, and y'all didn't even see the survey question. So I'm just like, if you don't have what you need to make a decision, you didn't even see the survey questions, all of those things, then why are we still approving this contract today? There's a blog called The Social Justice Political, and they're heading, the latest one was the one in which Natoli Natolied. I personally, Supervisor Natoli, you know I heart you, right? We don't always agree on anything, but I appreciate you. I appreciate that you ask the questions. But the Natoli Natoli part is like, you ask the questions, like, where is, are we getting, like, what is Deloitte getting us? Don't we have staff expertise for this? Great questions, right? You do that a lot. But then you receive unsatisfactory or lackluster answer from staff, like county council gave you and then CEO gave you. But then you move along with the motion, right? And it's like, this is still the problem. And so that's why this stuff keeps happening. There's no accountability. And if you really wanted to look at how to spend this money, there's resources out there. The Race Council has a vulnerability index, all about how to spend these COVID dollars in the equitable way, right? And so if Deloitte didn't do that job, we could still, we could.
You have 10 seconds.
I'll just say, I don't blame Deloitte. I blame the board and county leadership because you keep allowing actions that are either blatantly antithetical to transparency and accountability, or are just performative in nature, like the Deloitte survey. You keep allowing that to happen. So ultimately, it just falls on you again. So make a stand, do not approve that contract today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was your final caller on item four. Could you send the, or I'm sorry, we have one more caller for item four. Could you transfer that person over? Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you. My name's Michelle White. I'm a now District 1 resident, long time District 1. Calling on item four regarding the Deloitte contract. I think we've seen that the previous contract is highly fast and effective. And furthermore, I think what's most important is we need to garner institutional knowledge on these issues. So if anything, like many of the supervisors have expressed, we definitely need to have county staff or like a community-based organization do this work instead. Yeah, I just don't think we should waste money on companies who don't have the interests of Sacramento in mind. So yeah, that's pretty much it. Appreciate your time and the comments previously stated on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I believe our next, if you could transfer the next caller, and I'm kind of losing track here.
I also have one person, one more public comment in the chambers.
Okay, so I believe we're on item 16 now. If you could transfer the caller for item 16. And thank you, Madam Chair. We'll find a way to get them in. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good morning, board members. Bishop Chris Baker, South Sacramento, Macro Valley High Area. On this agenda item, I think it's a long time coming. It's going to be a great project. I've spoken to the folks that's involved with it, some schools down the streets that's excited to be part of it, to have after-school programs and whatsoever. And I'm personally involved in one down the road from there. And I'll be talking to those folks. Again, it's been a long time coming for that area. And I will politely and graciously ask that each and every one of you vote yes to get the ball rolling on this program. It's been a long time coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop.
Okay, that concludes the far item 16. Could you send the caller for item 21, please? Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, I'm commenting on agenda item 21. The resolution proclaiming October 2, 2021 as ostomy awareness day in Sacramento County by Supervisor Dawn Natoli. I'm writing today to request, I actually submitted my, my comments and writing as well, and I just wanted to follow up with a telephone comment. And the letter reads, "I am writing today to request the forthcoming material on ostomy awareness, October 2, and to offer information for the report on ostomy awareness. First, it's important to note ostomy is a digestive disorder whereby waste must be eliminated via bypass surgery of the intestine. Intestinal disorders have increased significantly over the years with a whole family of digestive disorders, including inflammatory bowel syndrome, irritable bowel, Crohn's disease, and colitis. Medical professionals failing to focus on the importance of gut health and its relationship to nutrition are failing their patients at a much greater rate than physicians fail their patients informing them properly about flu disease. In support of Supervisor Natoli's proclamation in October 2, be recognized as ostomy awareness day, I would like to ask this office make public the ostomy crisis in our community and the best methods of prevention of gut disease, that COVID is not the only order we are dealing with. Sacramento County can celebrate ostomy awareness by banning endocrine, disrupting chemical applications such as Roundup, demand foods containing GMO ingredients be labeled as containing phycococcus, and allow public to decide treatments best for their overall health and intestinal health. In my opinion, intestinal diseases are a much greater risk to Sacramentoans in COVID-19 because it gets no discussion in board meetings or on the nightly news. And many are unaware gut health is directly related to nutrition consumption and elimination. Since 2013, I have used food as medicine, opting to eat mostly organic, and I discovered many of the symptoms my body had been experiencing were eliminated after detoxing my gut. I haven't needed over-the-counter remedies or physicians care for almost eight years. I'm completely prescription-free, and when I caught COVID, my body healed itself naturally because my immune system was strong enough to withstand the effects of the virus. Our immune system begins in our intestine. As part of ostomy awareness, let's acknowledge the extreme that the public health department is promoting. Public health is suggesting we put unverifiable, untested, unidentifiable ingredients into our bloodstream for an illness with no symptoms, except that being perpetuated by false narratives and inaccurate data. Ostomy awareness should be about nutrition and eating for health. Ostomy awareness should include discussions of endocrine disruption and how to avoid foods that create health problems. Proclaiming ostomy awareness date October 2, and not disclosing the importance of eating for gut health and ineffective and reckless ways to govern the public by introducing mandates that they do not wish to have forced on them. When Sacramento County Office.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
When elected officials fail to research all aspects of disease and past policy based on faulty data or inaccurate data, you are not participating, you are participating corporately. As an example, here are two links regarding policy and disease that Sacramento County has failed to consider when implementing health policy the last 18 months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes the phone queue. And I understand we have some callers in person, or people in person.
We do not. That person is no longer waiting. It was one of the, okay, we pulled that.
Yes. So then we will be finished with our public comments.
Okay, and we have Supervisor Natoli would like to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to go back to item four. We haven't taken action on this, and we certainly heard public comment and obviously consistent with some of the written correspondence that we received in advance of this meeting. I guess, and I know Supervisor Serna pointed out in his comment, but there's all, as a part of this is a retroactive authorization for $51,000. What is that for?
That's for services that they have rendered, um, under the original contract, but the funding ran out.
Well, as I, and thank you for the response. It seems to me that, um, and again, some of what we heard, obviously, we, we, you know, heard in the past regarding this when we actually had the presentation to us back some weeks ago, um, that in light of the comments, I know you've, you've looked at this. Um, I don't know, there's another way to do this. And again, you know, again, I'm not calling into question Deloitte. I, you know, again, obviously, they performed under contract, and we have people who, um, review that. But as we talked about it a bit, and certainly in your responses, uh, and to some of the board member comments, um, you know, you, you've tightened this up to some degree, um, relative to task orders and, and timeframe. And, you know, whatever one's view is about the community survey and how it was conducted and so forth, uh, that, you know, that's to be taken into consideration. But this is work going forward. And, um, I guess I, for today's purposes, and I don't know if there's any, um, you know, problem with, you know, maybe putting this over for a week so we could further scrub this down, and, and maybe you've scrubbed it to the point where you're, you know, obviously brought the recommendation to us today. But I think getting some understanding behind, um, what the expectation, because even if they help us set things up, we're not, you know, we have received the money, we, our folks are going to be doing that work. You've said that for, you know, going forward. And I guess I'd like to have some, um, clear understanding of that, certainly in light of the comments and, and, uh, kind of reflected on that over the last few minutes. So, um, you know, I, unless there's some, um, objection, I, I think putting this over for at least a week, um, to have us that opportunity, I mean, if they're continuing to work, I mean, that's interesting. Are they, so they're still working? So this retroactive bill is growing?
No, we, they-
They've ceased work?
-have slowed down, and I, I'm gonna, I want Amanda to text me to, um, ensure that that is accurate. It's my understanding that they have slowed down and are waiting for this approval. Um, but I, I do need to confirm that with, for you.
It's, let me, let me pose one other question, then. So if we didn't enter into this contract, are some, are we putting ourselves in a, a disadvantaged position as relates to, um, our competitiveness? I mean, I, I see these, you know, the, the bullet points, you know, developing methods to support the use of federal state assistance across multiple funding sources. Well, we do that all the time. The county does that, and maybe not with this big a pot of money with, you know, the clock ticking. Um, also, um, evaluating, scoping, and advising on, uh, the funded grant or projects, incorporating evidence-based practices in the service delivery when appropriate, and providing project development assistance. You're not gonna do much of that in six months, uh, because we're not, you know, we're, unless they're going to assist us with what we're going to discuss next week about how we might develop RFPs for the, you know, the categories of funding and the allocations. And so, maybe it's appropriately linked with next week's conversation, uh, in that we're gonna be talking about that and how that ties in. Um, again, I'm not questioning, uh, so much your recommendation as just thinking about some of the comments and, and how this might be either further beneficial to this county and/or not, or how the scope of service might even be tighter than what's presented here today. So I'm, I'll leave it at that right now. Thanks.
Did you want to continue it, though, Supervisor Natoli?
I want to hear some conversation from my colleagues. So, but I'm, that was one of my suggestions, to maybe put it over for a week, but we'll see what I was gonna say.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Okay, sorry for steering this in another direction, but I want to get number 20 taken care of. Uh, we don't need to bring it back this afternoon. I believe I've passed language around, and it seems to be acceptable. So if I may, read it into the record.
Thank you.
Uh, so the last whereas in the resolution would read, "Whereas the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors unanimously allocated $5 million in contingency reserves during its September 2021 final budget hearing to support the relocation and settlement of Afghan refugees in Sacramento County." And then it would go to the, "Therefore, be it resolved."
I think that makes it a stronger, a little stronger. And, uh, also, for the intended purpose that you stated Supervisor Kennedy, uh, to, uh, forward this to our federal representatives, it also lets them know very clearly that, uh, we've always, we've already, um, not just, um, given this responsibility, uh, just lip service, we're actually, you know, thinking carefully about, uh, placing resources, uh, where they need to be, uh, now, in expectation for, uh, the services that will be required, uh, to accommodate the refugees. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. And I also think that that, um, reserve is good for the communities too, around, around the, um, the other Afghan folks. Supervisor Serna, did you have-
Yeah, just real quick. I just, I'm not sure where this is gonna land today, but, uh, I just want the record to, to show that I'll be, uh, voting no on item four.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think at this time, we do not, uh, have any other speakers in the queue, and we're, we can entertain a vote. We are continuing item two to next Tuesday, and to reflect Supervisor Serna's no vote on item number four.
Madam Chair, um, again, then I would, um, ask, I'm gonna move that we continue item four. Uh, again, there may be other direction coming from board members. Other board members may be, uh, willing to move forward today, but, uh, or I must suggest I would continue that. I don't know if there even be a second to it, that we hold that over and, uh, maybe couple it with our discussion, um, next week as it relates to, um, the broad categories of, uh, funding, the community priorities. And it may help provide clarification, it may not, and that's not Ann's recommendation, I understand that. But I, it seems to me that, you know, as we're embarking on, you know, what should be a very positive and certainly robust process for the community, that I think having confidence in the work this county does, and certainly those that we employ to do it, um, uh, needs to, you know, needs to be a real essential part of that. And, um, so anyway, I, I, I'm gonna suggest we, we, we hold item four over till, till next Tuesday.
I'll second.
Okay, um, please, uh, we have a motion by Supervisor Natoli, a second by Supervisor Kennedy. Please vote.
I think you had a speaker on the motion.
Oh, uh, let's see. Yes, no, we're-
No, Supervisor Desmond, I think it's punched up. I don't know if you have a speaker.
That's all right. I was gonna second him.
Do you have a question? We can take it.
No, I can.
Okay.
Already voted yes.
Okay. Thank you. You can ask it next week.
All right, and the motion carries with Supervisor Serna abstaining.
Okay, um, thank you. And so, at this time, we can entertain a motion on consent. And we have continued item four, but we are, and we have continued items two, and we are set to go on 20, so it's included in our consent. A chair will move consent.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Natoli. Please vote.
Okay, and let the record reflect that, um, items one through 22, uh, have been approved unanimously, uh, with the exception of item two and four.
Thank you. At this time, we have, um, I believe we have some off-agenda public comments. And I, I do have Blanca Hurtado. I think she left, but in case she's here.
She's on the phone, I understand.
Oh, she's on the phone?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. We'll move to the phone.
Okay, go ahead and transfer the first caller, please, for the off-agenda callers. Hi, caller, please start with your, if you could mute, uh, the meeting in the background.
Uh, I can't mute it because I'm actually in the building. I'm being denied access to comment in, in person. Um, the American with Disabilities Act is being violated. It prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability. Title III says accommodations must comply with basic requirements that prohibit unequal treatment. Hello?
We're, we're here, you, you-
Oh.
You can continue your public comment. You have a minute and a half left.
So I've called law enforcement, and I just want the public to hear, and I want you guys to know that I am here. I'm outside, I'm being denied, um, the opportunity to comment in person, which is unequal treatment. So I'll be waiting here until 7:00 PM if I have to, for law enforcement to show up and be able to make my comments as everyone else, um, is able to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, could you send the next caller, please?
Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Am I on?
Yes, you are, and, uh, you could start with your comments.
Okay. I'm John from Antelope. Uh, I want to thank the four supervisors for their common sense resolution at the last board meeting. My opinion was a simple resolution for the board to govern and protect the public health and avoid misinformation, myths, and half-truths concerning COVID-19. I feel the resolution gave support for the board, except for Sue Frost, to the county health department and their team for their diligent efforts to minimize and prevent the transmission of COVID-19 in Sacramento. I'm disappointed that our health department cannot enforce the legally binding health orders at this board, at this board meeting due to Sue's Frost total failure to obey and enforce the mandates. My opinion, Sue Frost is using her position to intimidate the health department to not enforce the mandates at her meeting, or there could be a price to pay for the department. Ms. Frost, not only are you a failure in your position as the board chairperson to legally conduct this meeting and follow the laws, you are a danger to the community. Ms. Frost, for your failures to support and your intimidation of the health department, and how you censor the community, disregard for the health and safety for the rest of the board and staff, for your lies and misinformation about the vaccines, COVID-19 masks, and for your promotion of conspiracy theories here and in public as a supervisor, you should do the right thing and resign. Our community does not need your failures.
You have 15 seconds.
From your opinion, yes, I will, from your opinion on our homeless residents to your opinion on masks and vaccines, your actions are harming us. Sue Frost, I ask you to do, do no more harm to this community. You are not fit for public office. Do the right thing and resign. Thank you.
Thank you.
We send the next caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, good morning. This is Gabrielle Ingram. I was made aware that there's a member of the public with a medical disability that cannot tolerate a face or shield, that's being denied equal access under the updated agenda guidelines that came in in the middle of the day Friday. I'd like to remember, to remind the county that we have dealt with this twice. Um, November of 2020, Sacramento PD was called on myself, and they were told the county that they could not trespass a member of the public in a county building. There were no laws broken, and that the CDPH guidelines themselves lift a medical exemption. So the member of the public that is in the lobby wanting to participate in the meeting with equal accommodation, there's a lot of things happening here that could be broken laws. Maybe you should ask legal counsel. Is the Brown Act being violated with the building being open and one member of the public being denied access? There's some things maybe that the legal counsel should look into, because we've walked this route, and, uh, that's it. This is, this is disgusting. You guys have, this is petty on a whole nother level. Yes, coronavirus is real. Yes, people are sick. But when you are violating somebody's own bodily autonomy and negating their own health and medical condition, we have a huge problem. So don't, I don't want to hear any more gaslighting coming from members of that chair, not the chair, of the board, about people citing medical segregation and medical discrimination, because you all just proved it right now, that we're not making things up. It is alive in Sacramento County. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, uh, if you could send the next caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, I'm calling in regards to the medical segregation that is happening right now in the county building. People who cannot medically tolerate a mask or a shield are being segregated and not allowed rights to equal access.
Thank you. Are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna do one last sweep, and this is our last caller for, um, she was our last caller for off-agenda comments.
Okay, great. Uh, in that, uh, case, we will move on to the next item, please.
Okay. Item 23 is the presentation of resolution of the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, proclaiming September 2021 as National Food Safety Month.
Maria, I'm gonna low, I'm gonna lower this down for you, Maria.
Oh, thanks. Okay, good morning, Chair Frost and members of the board. I'm Marie Woodin, Director for the Environmental Management Department. Joining me this morning is Jimnea Monasterio, Division Chief for our Food Safety Program. I want to thank the board for declaring September as National Food Safety Month, and in addition, recognizing the award of excellent winners for their efforts in maintaining excellent food safety practices. During this pandemic, it has been very challenging for both the restaurant owners and our inspectors. Recognizing these awards acknowledges the excellent health and safety work that both our inspectors and restaurant owners perform together, working collaboratively as a team, and despite these challenges, ensuring reduced foodborne illnesses in Sacramento County. Sacramento County continues to remain below statewide averages for foodborne illnesses. Chair Frost, would you please join me here at the podium in order to present this important resolution? We would also like to take this opportunity to obtain a photo. Good morning. I just want to, um, say that I am thrilled and honored to present this resolution, uh, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. Whereas the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors considers the health and well-being of its residents and visitors its highest priority, and National Food Safety Month is sponsored every September by the National Restaurant Association, is, and is an initiative focused on increasing awareness of the importance of food safety education within the food service industry, and raising awareness for consumers on safe food handling practices at home. Whereas its regular course of work, the Sacramento County Environmental Management Department conducts food safety inspections on all the retail establishments within Sacramento County, including those serving at-risk populations, including hospitals, licensed healthcare facilities, and school cafeterias. The Environmental Management Department conducts food safety education classes, retail food service workers, which reduce violations and the risk of foodborne illness. And whereas annually, the Environmental Management Department recognizes retail food business operations and owners who demonstrate exemplary work with food safety practices by honoring them with Food Safety Award of Excellence. The Environmental Management Department continues to work with the Sacramento County Department of Health and Human Services and its members for the retail food industry to prevent foodborne illness and to strive toward- to prevent foodborne illness and to strive toward excellence in food safety in the retail food establishments throughout Sacramento County. During National Food Safety Month, it's important to recognize the contributors of the dedicated individuals who are trained to ensure that the food safety is safely prepared and handled and served in restaurants, supermarkets, school cafeterias, hospitals, and in-home and throughout the county. And therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, does hereby proclaim September 2021 as Food Safety Month in Sacramento County. And we express our appreciation for all those who work to ensure that food preparation and handling for the protection of our residents and visitors and further encouragement of people to all ages and from all walks of life to better understand the importance of food safety practices in our daily lives. And that is a big job. So congratulations on September Food Safety Month.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, and now Division Chief Jannea Monasterio will be explaining how we determined our recipients for the Awards of Excellence.
Thank you, Marie. Good morning Chair Frost and members of the board. National Food Safety Month is a special time of the year for EMD because it gives us an opportunity to recognize and celebrate restaurants that do a fantastic job when it comes to food safety. Restaurants are highly regulated, and we are pleased that over 700 facilities inspected by EMD met the stringent criteria established for this award. We will be recognizing five businesses today, each in, one of each and from the supervisor's district. I would like to first give some background information about our food inspection program. During fiscal year 2020/2021, we issued 6,327 food permits and conducted a total of 17,403 food inspections. This was all accomplished with only 29 environmental health specialists who worked in partnership with food establishments and restaurants to ensure food safety standards were met. 2020/2021 was a challenging year on many fronts due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Businesses had to navigate changing requirements from public health orders. Food inspectors provided businesses with additional support and assistance to navigate these requirements and COVID-19. These efforts included modified inspections due to COVID restrictions, provided guidance and signage in up to five different languages, maintained an up-to-date webpage with specific information, conducted webinars, and used social media to provide updates with the latest information. The Environmental Management Department is pleased to present the Awards of Excellence to food establishments in Sacramento County to highlight their dedication to food safety. The work and dedication of our food establishment owners, operators, staff, and EMD's consumer protection team is reflected in the number of recipients this year. We had 4,989 facilities eligible for the Award of Excellence, and we are pleased that over 700 food establishments in Sacramento County have received this award. The criteria is high: no major violations during the last three regular unannounced inspections, and only a number of limited, limited number of minor violations. Unfortunately, some of our restaurants weren't able to attend today to receive this award in person due to staffing and scheduling complex. However, we will go through each of the districts and be able to present the representative from each one, and each of them have met with the Board of Supervisors and been awarded a plaque. And I did want to mention that we do have one restaurant in the audience that will be here to accept it in person. In District One Supervisor Serna, the Award of Excellence winner is Petra, located at 1122 16th Street in Sacramento. Owner John Rapkis is unfortunately was not able to be here today, and so that we will present his award, Supervisor Serna can come down to the podium and we'll present his award to you.
Okay. Yeah, just let it be known, he's not able to join us because I'm sure he's preparing his gyros right now, so. This is, this is a great award for him to be recognized and for Petra Greek, the restaurant, to be acknowledged for their food safety record. And as I had the opportunity, you can see from the photo, I joined him, I guess it was probably about six weeks ago, maybe, at the restaurant. I not only was there to give him the award, but also to take away some lunch. I would definitely encourage you, if you haven't had the opportunity to go there, to enjoy their fine Greek dining experience, please do so. It's a wonderful restaurant, and I'm really proud that we're able to acknowledge him today.
In District Two Supervisor Kennedy, the Award of Excellence winner is Famous Pizza, located at 2998 Freeport Boulevard. Owner Joe Wen unfortunately wasn't able to be here today. He has expressed his honor and gratitude in being chosen a winner, and Supervisor Kennedy would accept his award in his behalf.
Whoops. Yeah, so this is actually, it's a neighborhood stalwart. It's been there about 25 years, and a great family operates it, owns it, and I will say that I did take a chicken pizza away with me when we presented the award, and if you are in the land park area, please stop by Famous Pizza because it was absolutely fantastic. So I want to congratulate them in their absencia, but I will be seeing them very shortly. Thank you.
In District Three Supervisor Desmond, the Award of Excellent winner is Brew Cheese, located at 565 Howe Avenue in Sacramento. Owner Troy Proll was here earlier today. Unfortunately, he had to leave due to his store or his restaurant opening, and he needed to be there in person. So if Supervisor Desmond could come down, we'll accept the award on his behalf.
Oh, Troy had to leave because he's a small business owner and can't sit at a board meeting for several hours, and there's no award. You already gave it to him, so. But I too, like Supervisor Kennedy, ate at Brew Cheese's wonderful cheesesteaks. They're just dedicated to the community, very hardworking, small business owners, and I think it's probably safe to assume that many of the awardees, many more would have gone to District Three, I'm sure. Terrific restaurants there, but I too will be going to Brew Cheese's again soon with my entire staff. If anybody wants to go with us, certainly please let me know, and thank you very much.
You're buying, right?
Yeah.
No, 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 we gave it to him when he left. This is the next.
Got it.
Sorry, Mr. Desmond.
In District Four Chair Frost, the Award of Excellence winner is House of Chicken and Ribs, located at 3535 Alberta Road in Antelope. Owners Dwight and Kim Marnett unfortunately couldn't be here today to accept, and Chair Frost will be coming down to accept the award on their behalf.
Well, I'm delighted to receive this award, award on behalf of Dwight and Kim. I want to say that their reputation precedes them. It extends beyond Antelope and the area where their restaurant is, but they're known far and wide for not only having great food, but for being really great people and helping the underserved and going out of their way to do things in the community that make a difference. And so it, their food is amazing, and I am, I'm excited that they won this prestigious award. This is, sets them apart as excellent in what they do, and I want to congratulate them. I'm sorry they couldn't be here, but I'm excited for them. Thank you.
In District Five Supervisor Nattoli, the Award of Excellence winner is Yoshi Japanese, located at 9174 Franklin Boulevard in Elk Grove. Owner Messiah Kawa is here today to receive the award. Supervisor Nattoli, if you could come down to the podium to present this award.
Well, I'm delighted. Kawa, good to see you.
Hi.
Good to see you too, as well. Well, we have the family represented here, and I think as we've heard from my colleagues, the many, many family-owned restaurants, and I think certainly their emphasis on good food and customer service goes hand in hand with food safety. And I know those family-owned operations, they put in many, many hours, and certainly being here with us today is probably a little bit of a sacrifice to come down, but I know when we had a chance to talk, as I'm sure my colleagues did with the other owners, I encourage them, I think it's really important from the standpoint of recognizing not only their work, certainly with the regulatory entities and the emphasis on food safety, but also I think as each of the restaurants, we're certainly, I know with Yoshi's loyal customer base, and certainly during COVID, what restaurateurs and restaurant operations have had to endure in changing up their, you know, business practices, that, you know, the restrictions on dining in for a while, obviously, and then kind of refocusing on takeout. But I know when I was there, they were in the kitchen working, and you know, in between the photo op and talking a little bit, it was clear to me, I brought a copy of their, of their menu, because you may want to get an order in for later today, but I really was very impressed with their operation and certainly their focus on customer service and good food, and this is well deserved, and so I congratulate the family and certainly their employees. I think I met Liz when I was out there. Was that your employee? I think it was the lady who worked with, yeah. And I know, very hardworking, and they took time away today, and we congratulate them. I'm gonna offer you a chance, I told them we were going to be on television, so you've got a big audience, you have a big following now, so this is your chance to get a free, free plug-in for the restaurant. But congratulations to you on this award, well deserved, and if you'd like to offer a couple of words, feel free to do so.
Thank you for having us today, and we are, it's so honored to be here and having this award, and we will be making best effort to make delicious food and food safety. Thank you.
And come eat at Yoshi's, right? Yoshi's Japanese restaurant, so congratulations to you.
Thank you to all of the award winners. This is not an easy award to achieve. We appreciate and commend all of your safety, your commitment to food safety. This concludes our presentation, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work throughout the year to make sure Sacramento County is a safe place to eat out. Okay, next item, please. That was really nice. Item 24 is the presentation of resolution proclaiming October 2021 as Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign Month. Well, it gives me great pleasure to present this resolution this morning, and I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution, and then I want to say a couple of words before I hand it off to Doug Sloan, who is the Chair of the Employee Giving Campaign this year, and also Director of our Waste Management and Recycling. But so, this resolution of the Board of Supervisors proclaiming October 2021 as Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign Month. Whereas in the fall of each year, Sacramento County joins with communities throughout California to support Employee Giving Campaign Month, which results in a consolidated charitable campaign benefiting numerous organizations and causes in the community and beyond. Currently, five federations are included in the 2021/22 Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign. Community Health Charities of California, America's Charities, America's Best Local Charities, Global Impact, and the United Way California Capital Region, and a wide variety of organizations are represented in the five federations which make up Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign. And because of their efforts, our neighborhoods, communities, nation, and world will be a better place. Whereas in 2021 Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign will be chaired by Mr. Doug Sloan, Department of Waste Management and Recycling, and co-chaired by Mr. Ben Lamera, Department of Finance, and Steve Garrett, Public Defender. The lead loaned executive is Ms. Melissa McGoldrick, Department of Waste Management and Recycling, and the other loaned executives include Mr. Shantheney McIntosh and Mrs. Cheryl Chapel, Department of Finance, and Mr. Joe Cress, Public Defender's Office. In keeping with this year's campaign theme, Sacramento County, Working Together to Create Change, employees will lead their support, lend their support in planning numerous department fundraisers, activities throughout the county, and organizing and participating in an annual golf tournament and annual 5K run in October 2021. So therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the Sacramento County, State of California, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign Month, and Sacramento County, and the Sacramento County employees to consider participating in the employee campaign, giving campaign by attending organized activities throughout the next several weeks and lending their support in the annual charitable program. I just want to say, when I first was elected to county supervisor, we did this, the clerk office was sponsoring, or I guess leading up the employee giving campaign, and I was amazed at the amount of money that was raised, and I remembered that Supervisor Serna was doing all kinds of, you know, with his, with his band, he was doing events to raise money and match funds that were raised, and everyone got involved. And this is an extraordinary thing that the county employees do. I don't know how many employees we have. I think it's over 10,000 employees at Sacramento County, and everybody contributed and joined in on the fun. And I know for 2021, I'm really excited about our employee giving campaign. What's the name of it again? It's Together to Create Change. Together to Create Change. That's really great. So congratulations Doug on your chairmanship, and I wish you And I wish you all the best of luck in raising all kinds of money. If I were you, I would hit Supervisor Serna up for some more of those concerts. He's really good at it. And congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to say a couple of words?
If I could.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair Frost, and members of the Board of Supervisors. I would like to introduce Melissa McGoldrick. Melissa is the employee who, you can't put on events or campaigns like this without having great staff. And I know every department has staff that contributes to either being loaned executives and part of the campaign. In Melissa's case, we could not do what we do without her. In 2019, when there was the Walk Run, Melissa is the one that took all of the emails for that particular walk race. And you can imagine, there are 100 slots, and I think it filled up within 15 minutes. She's put a lot of time and effort into this process. Last year, we had some real challenges with the COVID. We did virtually an online campaign. We lowered the, the goal last year, but we, we raised almost $150,000 without being able to have the Walk and Run or any of the other events because of the COVID restrictions and people working remotely. So I am really excited this year. Christie School with CHC, they have put together a revamped website. The Walk Race is going to be held October 28th. You have Actor Shock Concert, and then you have the Triathlon. And so we're following up at the end of the month in the Parkway with the Walk Run. They have changed their, their online signups, and the Walk Race will be done via their portal. And it keeps track of how, exactly how many. It doesn't rely on somebody like Melissa to, to count the number of entries going through. But I appreciate Ben and the Finance Department staff and all the other loaned executives. And as Chair Frost said, this is not just a department, this is a whole county involvement. The employees, the, the raffles, the bake sales, the, all kinds of different events that go on during the month. And so I'm really excited for, for the, the county. It's tremendous outpouring of support from the county employees back to the, the citizens of the county. I'm very pleased and proud to be the Chair this year. And again, thank you very much for the time.
Thanks, Doug. Madam Chair, if I could add, special appreciation to Doug and his staff.
Sorry, I can't hear.
Doug?
I can hear you, but I can't see you.
Yeah. Due to retirements, Doug actually was Chair last year during the pandemic, and they managed the virtual program and managed to raise, as he said, over 150,000. And because of retirements, and the next department that was in line to take this, we didn't have someone to take it over. So Doug and Melissa and the DWMR staff agreed to do it a second year with substantial help from Finance and from Public Defender. But I just wanted to acknowledge Doug and Melissa stepping up for a second year in a row to take this and make it happen. So appreciation to Doug and Melissa and DWMR staff, and Departments of Finance and Public Defender.
Okay. I wanted to just make an announcement, just to put on the record, that I take my mask off to read the item into the record, so that people can read my lips when I'm reading the item into the record. And also, it's hard for me to, to, to read all of this with, with the mask on. Okay, so for item 25, this is the Cordova Recreation and Park District Park Development Impact Fee Program Implementation. This is to approve the Cordova Recreation and Park District Development Impact Fee Program. You're also introducing an ordinance adding Chapter 16.157 to Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code for the establishment of the Cordova Recreation and Park District Park Development Impact Fees. You're waiving full reading of the ordinance and continuing to October 5th, 2021 for adoption. The environmental determination is exempt.
That is a mouthful. Good morning, members of the Board. Dorothy Codani with the County Engineering Division.
Madam Chair, let's start, Dorothy. Madam Chair, if I could, just for a moment.
Yes, sir.
Just before Dorothy embarks on the presentation, I wanted to note, I know that we all are receipt, I believe, of very late correspondence that was actually sent at 11:00 PM last night and received by our offices this morning as we arrived at work. Again, there are some policy issues that obviously be framed up with both in the presentation and I trust in the discussion. They also raise a legal issue, and I've talked both with the county executive and with county council briefly before the meeting this morning. So again, I, they've had a chance to look at this, but this is all very recent information. And again, you know, we certainly take this into consideration as we talk about this. But I do think that, you know, there's been this legal aspect raised. And so it might be wise, at some juncture, wanted to hear from the county council, and they may need some, a bit of additional time to respond to that particular point. But I didn't want to interrupt the flow here, but I do want to point that out. So as we get into the presentation, I know this has been pending on our agenda for a number of weeks now, and people are prepared to make the presentation. But in light of the very last-minute receipt of this, it's made it very difficult, I think, for staff to do their analysis. I trust that copies were shared with the district representatives that are here. And there may not be new issues, but they certainly rise to, at least to a point about legal aspects. And so I don't know, Elise, if you want to wait and, and maybe some time will give a chance to do some analysis around this. And we could certainly hear the matter today, but I do think there's an issue that probably needs to be addressed and thoroughly researched before we actually take action on this.
Right. We did speak this morning, as you know, and my office is not prepared to give a legal opinion based on the late-breaking correspondence from the BIA. As I said to you earlier, we'd be happy to make that analysis and provide something to the Board by the end of the week, if the Board desires to continue this until next week. And we would certainly welcome that opportunity, but won't be able to provide a significant legal analysis to that issue today. Although, we have been working with county staff and the Cordova Recreation and Park District. We want to make sure that anything that's brought up in the letter that was received late last night from the BIA is addressed by our office.
Okay.
So whether that means that you want to continue it now or hear the presentation in light of that, I will obviously defer to the Board on that, but just wanted to get that out to the rest of the Board as well.
If I could ask, there's, I, I trust there's no particular problem with hearing the presentations. Again, this matter, there's a lot of information that's been sent via previous correspondence. I know there, you know, again, staff has done some analysis. So we could certainly hear that. But then, at the conclusion of today's presentations, put it over for, I think the feedback is important from council as it relates to issues that have been raised in kind of the 11th hour, both literally and figuratively. So.
Yes. I'm inclined to agree. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Mr. Natoli, because I, too, you know, when we get 18 pages of correspondence the morning of, that's pretty technical. I don't feel comfortable going forward with this, particularly when it comes from an organization who, you know, is, is responsible for a large portion of housing being built. And we all know that housing and the lack thereof is one of the biggest issues facing Sacramento County. So I think for a variety of reasons that I would need more information to ensure that this isn't going to have unintended consequences that might hurt us in our efforts to build more housing stock in Sacramento County. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And also, let me echo the sentiment of Supervisor Kennedy. I, I agree. I need, I need more time to evaluate this as well. And I'm also very sensitive to, to anything that's going to hamstring us, rightly or wrongly, in our effort to get more housing in Sacramento. And sometimes, that's just a matter of, you know, process at times. And, and, you know, it's amazing how much word gets around. I was contacted actually by, by several, not just BIA, but others. And even if there's a perception that the process in Sacramento County, how they determine some of these impact fees, makes it a less desirable place to do business, that impacts our ability to attract more housing, develop both greenfield development and infill development, which I'm, I'm very interested in. So I, I too would, I'm not prepared to vote on this today. And look forward to the presentation, but also look forward to getting some, some questions answered. Thank you.
Okay, and Supervisor Natoli, I wonder if we need to hear the presentation? We do have one public comment, just as an FYI.
No, I, I think we need, again, I think we need, people are here prepared. We can hear the presentation, we can hear, you know, positions of support or opposition or, or issues of, of difference. I, I would just preface that, too, that certainly housing is key to, to, you know, the community quality of life and so forth. But so are parks. And I think that's what we're talking about here, how you fund parks under new development scenarios. And they're, they're, they're key. And we know that as, you know, as public facilities are very, very important. And certainly, we have, in the unincorporated area, we work very closely, obviously, with independently-elected park districts, and they have the same parameters under the law, to me, as this county does, when we input in effect fees that relate to transportation and, and water, water quality, a whole host of things. So I think certainly in light of, you know, again, the correspondence, you know, I'm prepared to hear the presentation, and I assume my colleagues are. You know, people can voice their, their views on this, and then have this come back at an, at an early date. I would suggest we could even turn this around in a week, or certainly in three weeks. We'll meet twice in October. So I think that would be sufficient time, in light of the time that's been devoted thus far to this matter. So that's, I would just conclude with that right now. So, thanks.
I guess, please, I guess, please proceed.
I was gonna say, I'm not used to this much dialogue before our presentation.
I know.
And before we start, we do acknowledge all of the concerns by the supervisors. And definitely, staff, both county staff and the park district staff, our effort is to produce an item that, and a program that is acceptable and for all parties. And we hope that during the presentation, it'll also highlight to you all of the discussion and all of the negotiations that have occurred over the past years, and perhaps try to, you know, address some of the issues that, that you've received. So with that, oh, and actually, before we begin, I do want to make a point that the noticing requirement for this hearing, because of that, I think there are some procedural items that I will leave to the executive team as far as to address also, so that we're able to follow protocol as far as noticing. So with that, again, Dorothy Codani with the County Engineering Division. And as mentioned, this item will be jointly presented by county staff and by members of the park district team. The Cordova Recreation and Park District was formed in 1958 and provides park facilities and services to an area of the county 13 miles east of downtown Sacramento. The current district inventory includes 41 parks and four recreation facilities, serving in existing 115,000 residents. The park district developed their strategic master plan in 2012 and approached the county in 2014 to implement a new park development impact fee program to meet the, the demands of future development. State law authorizes local agencies to approve and implement development impact fees. And therefore, any impact fees of this nature within the county, as you know, must be approved by the Board of Supervisors and imposed and collected by the county. We do mention that county support and approval of this fee program is consistent with many general plan policies, including but not limited to PF 120 to 123. As detailed later in this presentation, as mentioned, the county and the park district have collaborated over many years on this program. And this item today is the result of all of those discussions. We did have many recommendations and adjustments, and honestly, some of those recommendations were not initially welcomed by the park district. But through our years of discussion and collaboration, again, too, we have a product that is mutually accepted to all parties. And as I mentioned, this endeavor involved much outreach and multiple meetings with developers, the Building Industry Association, and other interested parties. And so at this time, we will, this presentation, which will include proposed fees and other items of interest to you, will be continued by the park district team. And that'll be starting with Mr. Patrick Larkin, the district's general manager. Thank you.
Dorothy, before you leave, Madam Chair, if I could. So you talked about the noticing requirements. I know that there was a notice in the Sacramento Bee.
Correct.
Fairly extensive over the weekend. So is that what you were referring to?
Yes, exactly. And to, I know there's some procedural steps to, mainly, we just want to avoid having to notice again because of the cost involved and then just the different steps.
You mean, if we were to continue? Is that what you're referencing? If we were to put this over for a couple of weeks?
Supervisor Natoli, if I could maybe add and, and ask for county council to weigh in as well. If we continue it, if we continue it to a date certain, I believe we do not have to re-advertise.
Right.
If we just continue it and without a date certain, we'd have to re-advertise the item.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah. No, I, again, I would fully intend that we wouldn't have to re-advertise. I don't know what it costs to run those advertisements, but it can't be.
$5,000.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just know that sometimes in the shuffle of things, we may forget a detail like that, and then we're scrambling to try to take care of that.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
Very good. Thanks. Okay.
I can't walk and chew gum, so he'll be in my...
Good morning, Patrick.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Dorothy. Good morning, Chair Frost and members of the Board. I'm Patrick Larkin, the General Manager for Cordova Recreation and Park District. I'd like to introduce my team that's here today. First, Laura Taylor, who is our Park Planning and Development Manager. MacAdell, our Chief Financial Officer. Bob Thurbin, our district's Legal Counsel. Victor Urzak, who is Goodwin and the Consultants, Goodwin Consulting Groups and Financial Consultant, and Rick Smith, a Management Analyst for our team. CRPD's Board of Directors is also watching remotely, and our previously submitted letters to each of you dated June 28th, and it's on your Board Packet and Attachment Two. So this presentation hits five key points. We will be introducing you to the district, explain the seven-year journey that brings us here today, demonstrate extensive stakeholder outreach, and how our fee compares to similar agencies in the Sacramento region. Thank you. This map shows our district boundary with the major developments in the unincorporated county area, circled in red, along the Jackson Highway Corridor. The future growth in this area is anticipated to be approximately 51,000, to which this fee program will apply. These fees will not apply or be spent in existing areas of the district. The land use planning for these developments has been going on for years, and planners have been used between 4.87 acres and five acres per thousand residents for Quimby Park and Land Dedication requirements per the county code. The park fee structure must reflect the land use plans that have been approved or are very close to being approved. If the population numbers shrink or expand, the total fee collected also shrinks and expands. And therefore, the proper level of service is constructed based on the fees collected. The district works with two land authorities in our boundaries. The park impact fee implemented in the city of Rancho Cordova is currently 10,536 per single-family residence. The fee, for your consideration today in the county jurisdiction, is 9,107. CRPD has adopted a strategic master plan and level of service in 2013. Originally, it was CRPD's intent to implement a consistent level of service all of, within all of the new growth areas, regardless of the land authority. Through seven years of stakeholder outreach with developers and the BIA, and working closely with Sacramento County staff, CRPD has negotiated a significant fee reduction in the county. On May 19th, 2021, our CRPD Board of Directors conducted a public hearing on the 2021 NEXUS Study and Park Impact Fees in the unincorporated county areas of the CRPD. There were no public comments made by the development community or BIA at that public hearing. The CRPD Board fully approved the NEXUS Study and Park Impact Fee on June 16th, 2021. Implementing this fee creates efficiencies moving forward with the development entitlements and will allow faster processing of development applications for the county. It ensures that each development pays its fair share of the new growth parks and facilities that serve the anticipated population growth of 50,000. CRPD worked with county staff to have the residential unit types match county definitions so it will be easy to apply at the county's building permit. so it will be easy to apply at the county's building permit counter. Fee credits and reimbursements for developer-constructed facilities can be applied as needed. This next slide just highlights some of the adjustments that were made. This slide gives a summary of the negotiated adjustments made to the CRPD's 2014 fee in response to the input by county staff, BIA, and stakeholders. Numbers one through five were changed to meet the county code, and numbers six through nine are items that were adjusted to accommodate the specific area of the NEXUS study. This slide lists the amenities that were removed from the district's 2012 level of service during the seven years of negotiations with stakeholders and the BIA. These items were removed to reduce the capital improvement plan costs approximately $29 million for a population of 50,000. Major removals and reductions from the new growth CIP include an aquatic center, community gathering centers, amphitheaters, and a community marketplace, converted synthetic fields into grass fields, and reduced spray parks to three community park locations. This has been a long journey of seven years working with the county, BIA, and stakeholders, and in the spirit of collaboration and trying to get to a fair park impact fee for future residents, we are confident that we have addressed and responded to any concerns the county, BIA, and the stakeholders may have had during this long process. We all need to make compromises. This body of work and the resulting fee has been vetted out to the point where it is now appropriate for the Board of Supervisors as a land authority to implement. Since the district is requesting the county approve the park fee in, since the district requested, the county approved the park fee in 2014, we have met the stakeholders eight times. There have been 10 rounds of detailed technical comments and responses coming from both the BIA and CRPD. Concurrently, during the seven years, CRPD met several times with like agencies, Southgate Recreation and Park District and Casumnas Community Service District, to benchmark cost data. All of that detailed information has been shared with the county staff and the BIA in the meetings and rounds of correspondence. CRPD's 2021 fee for the unincorporated Sacramento County of CRPD is within 1.3% of the average Sacramento region fee comparison. It is within $15 of the recently approved North Vineyard Station fee program and our neighboring Southgate Recreation and Park District. It is appropriate to bench other Sacramento region park impact fees as opposed to other areas of California that are not relevant.
Excuse me, Supervisor Serna had a comment.
Yeah, before you leave that slide.
Sure.
I just want to confirm that this is all apples to apples. In other words, is this all parkland fees, Quimby fees, or is this also facilities and Quimby?
I believe this fee came from the county in terms of the comparison benchmarks that were made related to park impact fees that are being proposed.
Is there anyone in the chambers that can answer the question? The reason I ask is the, when you look at Laguna Ridge, the bottom, you look at Rockland at the top, the difference is pretty extraordinary. So I'd like to understand, is this, did we confirm this is all just Quimby? Is it all just facilities, or is it a mix of both in every case?
So Bob Davison, Division Chief of the County Engineering Division. This comparison is based on as close as you can get to an apples-to-apples comparison. And I'll give you an example. North Vineyard Station also has a trail component. The trail component is separate from the park district facilities and fees. Including the trail component, it would not have been an apples-to-apples comparison. And so the North Vineyard Station comparison point is based upon basic park improvements, park facilities, ballfields, community centers, the same type of facilities that are in the proposed CRPD fee. The others as well, a lot of this work, I think, came from a fee study that the county conducted a few years ago. Will then prepared that fee study for us, and the purpose of that study was to do an apples-to-apples comparison. And so a lot of that was sorted out. Now, there are a lot of comparison points, you know, I mean, it may be possible there's a component Laguna Ridge that's not in this program. But for the most part, this represents the fees that a developer's gonna pay if they're developing in one of these park districts for the same type of facilities that are in this fee program.
Well, having, you know, been very versed in fees, having at one point in my life worked actually for the Bay Area equivalent of the BIA and doing several fee studies 25 years ago, I can't stress enough how important it is when you're trying to impress upon a governing body where a proposed fee is in the spectrum of fees in a given region with different jurisdictions, that it absolutely has to be apples-to-apples. Because otherwise, it's, you know, it's telling a very different story. So I'm hearing, if I'm hearing you correctly, Bob, all of these fees, to best of your knowledge, and I understand the footnotes on some of them, are comprehensive, so it includes land and it includes facilities. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, before Bob leaves, if I could.
Yes, please.
Yeah, so Bob, when you, on these bike trail or trail and basin components, and two of them that kind of bookend or are very close to the proposed fee here for Cordova Recreation Park District, it doesn't include an additional, I guess, dollar amount for trails and with, I guess, in the Southgate system? So how are trails being treated under this proposed fee?
So, under this proposed fee, trails are not being treated, but the developments that are paying this fee are participants in the master planning process that's going on in the Jackson Corridor right now. There's two adopted master plans, New Bridge and Mather South, and then there's two pending plans. And those plans, the financing plans, the entitlement, the conditions in the financing plan for those developments, they have, they acknowledge the CRPD fee for the park district level of fees, and then there's a separate trails component. It's a regional component, it, these are trails that are owned, operated, and maintained by regional parks. Liz Bellis is here today if you have more questions on that. So it's, there's a trail component that's completely outside of the Cordova Recreation and Park District fee for the Jackson Corridor developments.
So let me just use the example, because one of the meetings that I had had representative from Mather South, and within that, it's one of the developments that has received the initial entitlement approval. So the parks themselves would fall under the CRPD and the fee there for development and dedication of land. The trails that link, you know, and it may be a distance or it may not, those are gonna be separately, and so the trails then would fall to regional parks to maintain versus, is that the same way it's done in Southgate and Casumnas CSD, that those trails that link those parks within the community along the, you know, the natural waterways or, you know, adjacent to, you know, man-made and constructed facilities?
Yeah.
Those trails then will fall to parks?
So I'm not saying that every trail in the county is maintained by regional parks.
Well, no, I would say.
But for the Jackson Corridor, that is the proposal.
Okay.
There are some, if you go to Vineyard and North Vineyard Station, there are some trails that are maintained by the Southgate Recreation and Park District. There are some that are maintained by the County Department of Transportation, and then there may be some that are maintained, and those ones not by the park district. So having said that, they're still outside the normal park fee.
Right.
As a separate component.
Yeah, I get it, a fee. I just, it's curious to me, though, that those linkages, because those trails, and again, depending upon the regional nature of them, but for regional parks in the Jackson Corridor, including Mather South and New Bridge, that the trails will be under a different fee component, I get that, but then they follow regional parks, and so the O and M becomes obligation of the county, and then there's an annual fee under a CFD that then provides the ongoing maintenance and oversight of those trails, and it flows to the county? Is that how it's gonna be done?
Yeah, the proposed conditioning for the Jackson Corridor does contemplate a maintenance component for the, for those trails.
And is that similar in Easton?
I would have to go back to the Easton, I didn't review that one recently.
Because I know there are regional facilities adjacent to the watershed, that, maybe you could answer, Liz, again, but Southgate maintains a lot of the trails, and the Tillson Parkway, and you have taken the trail dedications and so forth, and maybe you have a fee component. So again, I understand that piece of, I just, why do we make this with these layers? Morning, Liz.
Good morning, Liz Bellis, Director of Regional Parks. Hopefully to answer your question. So when we started down the process of developing the master plans for this Jackson Corridor communities, we decided that the regional trail facilities would be under the purview of regional parks, because they will be regional in nature, and they'll be connecting the different communities together. I do believe we do have a component in Easton as well. We do not maintain trails in the Southgate area.
Okay, so that was a determination that we made through the land use process, that we were going to in both Easton, obviously, that's many years since its initial approvals, and then the Jackson Corridor, we're gonna have a regional trail system, so anything on-street, off-street, long stream badge is gonna fall to this regional component? Is that what's anticipated?
So trails that are adjacent to roadways would fall, most likely fall under the Department of Transportation to maintain, but Department of Regional Parks and Department of Transportation work together to develop the costs associated with the trails, so that as the developments move forward, we can decide which department will be best suited to maintain those areas, and we would, it would be a consistent cost.
Okay. Can I just ask a question while you're there and Patrick's there? So how's it being treated in the city of Rancho Cordova? Are those trails maintained by the city or the CRPD through some agreement? And is that a part of their $10,500, or is there an additive on top of that?
They're, well, we're older, so it's 1958, we originally had trails, but then as the city incorporated, the trails went to the city of Rancho Cordova, so we're not maintaining all of the trails within that area of our district.
What about the new development, though, Patrick? That's what I was asking about specifically.
Same thing. We're not maintaining those trails. Those trails typically go to the city of Rancho Cordova. We want to focus on parks and make sure that, you know, we have also some corridors and some landscape medians that we had once, but once the city incorporated, they had an interest in doing those as well. So they collect fees separate from our park impact fees in the city of Rancho Cordova.
For trails and other amenities?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. That answered it. Thanks, thanks both of you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, can I ask a follow-up question on this?
Yes, please.
So, just so I'm, sometimes I'm slow on the uptake here.
That's all good.
So the proposed fee then, on your, on your chart here, that would also include the same asterisk, right? It would have, does not include X amount for trails.
Correct.
Okay. So then my question is, and I appreciate Supervisor Serna raising the issue to make sure we're comparing apples to apples. Then my other question, that, so is the amount of acres that I'll, when you're further along in the presentation, I'll ask more questions about that, but the 4.87 acres per 1,000 residents, does that acreage include the trail lands as well as the parks?
I know it's the Quimby dedication for the county that they've established, but...
No, it does not include the trail system.
Okay, so, okay. So if you were to include the trail system, do you have a sense of what the additional acreage would be per 1,000 residents, Liz?
I do not. I'm going to turn to Bob on that one.
And I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear the questions, if you can repeat it.
So the, I'm looking at the staff report, and it looks like originally it was 2.79, I mean, I'm sorry, BIA requested 2.79 acres per 1,000 residents, and the fee to be calculated based on that. But this fee, because that's, I think, what the current residents who are served by the park district, what their fee is based on. This fee is based on 4.87 acres per 1,000 residents, and I'm just wondering, does that acreage include the trail lands?
It does not. Now, the, that acreage is consistent with the county code, the Quimby factors that are in Title 22 of the county code, and there could be old trails in the district that may have counted for, you know, the district's areas that, you know, that they analyze when they're figuring out the Quimby factors. But those would be older district trails that have park amenities that are not regional trails maintained by regional parks. So the proposed Jackson Corridor 4.78 or...
4.87.
8.7, thank you. I don't want to discount the park acreage. So that factor for the Jackson Corridor, for the master planning for the Jackson Corridor does not include the trails that would be owned and maintained by regional parks?
Got it. Okay, no, and just since you're talking about, actually, so the 4.87, you make reference to Chapter 22.4 of the Sacramento County Code. That 4.87 per 1,000 residents, it doesn't, and I'm looking at the code, that's not a, is there a specific formula that you came up, how you came up with that amount, or is that, is there some discretion in determining the amount of acreage per 1,000 residents?
So that's a process that's in the county code, and I can't say that I'm the ultimate expert on that. It's the implementation of the Quimby requirements of state law, and I believe that there's a process where the county worked for the park districts and implements the Quimby factors for the various park districts. Leann, I don't know if she has any more information than I do, but, you know, I believe that it's based upon census information, and I believe that the park districts go through a process where they inventory the existing acreage of parks in their district. They go through the process with the County of Sacramento, and they implement and then update ordinances for the Quimby factors for the individual park districts. For this district, it ended up being 4.87. I believe it's been that way for quite a while.
Okay. Bottom line with it, I'm taking from that, there is, there is a certain level of discretion, certainly how you come up with that figure, it sounds like to me. It's not, it's not totally formulaic, set out by county code or by statute.
It's certainly an ordinance that your board would implement, and it would be, it would need to be consistent with the Quimby Act of the state law.
Okay.
And Supervisor Desmond, if I could add just one more component to that. The reason that some of these Quimby numbers have increased for park per 1,000 is that the lot sizes have gotten smaller. So the area for people to have outdoors activities and recreate and so on, yards have gotten to where there are almost nothing, and so places for people to have that outdoor parks, you know, and rec-type ability has caused the need to probably make the number for new development higher than the old development, because the yards were so much bigger and there wasn't as much parks per 1,000 residents.
Completely understand. No, I appreciate that. My question is really just kind of the process, and is there discretion? And also keep in mind that if you add on the park, the trail lands, it's more than 4.87 acres, obviously, is what they're paying for, you know, one, a portion of it to the, this park district and a portion of it to the county, obviously, so. Just that's what I was just trying to understand a little bit.
And since it sounded like the board's interest was to continue this, even if it was a very, very short time, we can get the actual formulas and figure out what state law does require and bring that back to you as well and provide that information.
Thank, thanks, Steve. Appreciate that.
If I could, well, we still have Bob teed up, Madam Chair, and Steve as well, and Mr. Larkin, but, so, and you touched on it in your last comment to Supervisor Desmond's questions. You had, you know, there were older development standards, certainly as districts evolved, and, you know, either a criteria for the analysis, some of that emanated from state law with the Quimby Act, but also then with making the calculations. I would want to note that this district in particular was a real leader back in the 1960s under its then-director Paul Hagan, when they were the first ones, as I recall anyway, at least among the first in the state to do the joint use facilities agreements. And again, accounting for ballfields, community centers, whatever their construct and constitution was at the time, and other facilities, they partnered with, you know, Fullerton Cordova School District, and, you know, and if you look at Hagan Park, which is a real treasure of itself, and it butts the Parkway, sits adjacent to both Amell's Middle School and Cordova High School, and those have been shared use facilities over generations now. And again, I just, I make that point, because if we talk about development standards and whether it was the size of community centers, and I- community centers, and I get it, that new development needs to pay for new development impacts and not for, you know, some past accounting forever, how things were done. But it just, it occurs to me that over time, things have evolved. And I think, Steve, you hit on it as relates to, you know, the size of lots and the developable area, but the usable area, and people, you know, seeking out certain amenities. And that's obviously what the Nexus study covered. I wanted to ask about that particular piece, though, on the, on the, we did this, we had other park districts involved in this discussion going back to 2012, 2014. We've adopted fee adjustments in all those cases. This is the only one that's outstanding. Is that correct, Bob?
I'm, sorry, the only one outstanding as compared to what other fees?
No, well, I meant to park fees. We, all the districts were involved at one time, and we made those adjustments. We did the, we had the study come to us. This is the one that was still remaining of that work that was done several years ago. Is that correct?
So several years ago, we worked with the BIA, and we had a process for fees, costs, and standards. And we actually implemented fees for eight infill park districts. And we implemented fees that the BIA supported, that the county, the BIA, and those park districts worked together on fees that were reasonable in relation to the, what would be provided in those park districts. Interestingly, most of those are five acres per 1,000, by the way. So that was a separate effort. There, there was some work on a potential similar effort with greenfield districts, and I think the Cordova Recreation Park District, the Southgate Recreation Park District, they did come to meetings with us, and they worked with us at the time. But we never got to a, like, in the eight infill park districts for infill, we got to a, an approved understanding between the BIA and the county and the park districts that came to the board. But that never happened for Cordova Recreation and Park District or Southgate or the other ones, or the greenfield park districts.
Okay, so, but didn't we, have we made adjustments in Southgate? Because it falls behind our specific plan processes, North Vineyard, Florin Vineyard Gap, Vineyard Springs and so forth. So haven't we made adjustments?
Yes, we have. You know, those Southgate park fees have, have evolved over time. You know, you know, many years ago, they were to cover the turf and irrigation. Over time, we added ball facilities and such. And each time, it was a decision that came to the board, you know, what level should those, you know, Southgate park fees be supported? So, so yes, over time, that has been, been vetted. And one of the things that we did with, with the Cordova Recreation Park District is we did look to the Southgate Recreation and Park District as a, you know, reasonable fee for new development area. And I know there were some, like Dorothy alluded to it earlier, we, we had a great relationship, but there were certainly a lot of back and forth in regards to what facilities would be in the Cordova Recreation Park District program. And what we have before you today is a program that's, you know, very consistent with those Southgate programs.
Okay, so the apples-to-apple comparison that Supervisor Serna was asking about earlier, if you look at Southgate, because they've built new community centers, they have, you know, spray grounds, they have the dog parks and different amenities, along with, you know, more traditional ball fields and, and, you know, passive areas and so forth. So their, their fee covers for new development in those new development areas. And there are existing pockets in South Sacramento and certainly in Vineyard and areas that they serve, you know, again, certainly that about the city, that in existing, you know, infill areas. But there's, there, those components in the Southgate are very comparable to what's being, to what's being included here?
They are very comparable.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And, and the separate trails there are Southgate trails, not county trails, though. So that component that 2000, a little less than 2,000, but the 18, whatever it is.
Yeah, I believe so. I don't have to double check if some of those are DOT maintained, but those are not main, regional park maintained.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the ones along the creek sheds, the Tillison and so forth.
Right. Those are Southgate maintained under a separate fee component.
Separate fee. And there are CFDs that support both the maintenance and operations for both parks, either L&Ls or CFDs as well as for trails. Is that accurate?
Southgate definitely has a CFD that supports the maintenance for a lot of their facilities. I am not intimately familiar with their CFD, but they certainly do have that.
And, and just by way of comparison, not to get too deep in this, but so, Kasuma CSD obviously have a relationship with the city, but certainly with the unincorporated area in, in, in the county. They have a similar approach. They don't, you show Elk Grove here as being different planning areas with Laguna Ridge and, and East Elk Grove and so forth, so.
The Kasuma CSD fee that we, that your board imposed and we, we implement, it's really the unincorporated area around Galt. It's a different type of fee. It's, it's not a greenfield new growth area park fee supporting, you know, hundreds and hundreds of units going in and master plan development. It's, it's a very small fee. We actually, when we contemplated that fee, suggested that maybe you didn't really need it in unincorporated area because there's administrative costs and such, and with such a little development, you know, that maybe they didn't need, but they wanted a district-wide fee collected in the city of Galt and in the county of Sacramento. And so we worked with them and implemented that fee. It's, I would, honestly, to answer that question, I'd have to, you know, pull that program out just to compare the capital improvement programs. But it's, it doesn't include components over what we're talking today. Whether there's, I'm not sure if there's a community center component in that one.
Okay. But, but the CIP for, because again, the city administers, and again, probably, you know, some sort of similar relationship that the city of Rancho Cordova has with CRPD, the Kasuma CSD with, with the city of Elk Grove, they've worked out arrangements on park development, park dedication, park maintenance and so forth, but...
Yes. The cities of Galt and Elk Grove implemented a very similar fee with a CCSD fee.
Okay. Does that show, does the Galt show here on the chart, city of Galt? Or you just, because you show plan areas in Elk Grove, so it doesn't show, because there is a, you know, suburban.
You know, I, we just didn't review, if there is one, we didn't review that for this comparison.
Okay. All right. Because it's part of Kasuma CSD, though.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's, that's all I have right now. Thanks.
Thanks, Supervisor.
So I'll continue.
Yes, please.
Just for clarification, because I am aware of Kasuma CSD, I worked there for 11 years. Actually, they just provide fire services in Galt and not recreation and park services in Galt, just for that clarification.
The city. Okay, thanks.
Yep. All right. So I guess we're at the end of this presentation. So before I conclude, I want to thank Dorothy Kadami, Bob Davison, and the now-retired Susan Getz, who was a part of this journey, as well as the BIA and the stakeholders. We've had numerous meetings and numerous back-and-forth technical comments and everything. And we want a fair, you know, price for these future residents to pay, to get quality parks, especially during COVID, when everyone is out in the parks and it's a place for people to gather when people were hiding in their houses. The importance of parks is critical for healthy and high-quality living experience. So we want that for our future residents, especially in Sacramento County. And with that, I do have some of my CRPD team as well as legal counsel. If you wanted further information, a legal perspective, maybe on the Quimby discussion, I have Bob Thurbin here, who's our legal counsel, who can maybe speak a little bit more to that if that hasn't been a satisfied answer at this point.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna had a comment.
Great. Thank you, Chair. So as some of my colleagues mentioned at the outset before the presentation, expressing some of their, their concerns about the impact that impact fees can have on housing affordability especially, that's not, I don't think that's lost on any of us. Again, having done a lot of research in this, this area in the past, and because I understand that we're going to continue this, that gives us a little more time to dive a little deeper into understanding some of the background assumptions and inputs that go into the proposed adjusted fee. One of the things that I would have our, our team consider is that in a strong market, in a market that is a seller's market, including sellers that happen to be developers, new home builders, in a, in a market where they more or less can command the prices that they are right now, it's, it's much easier to pass on the fee burden, the total fee burden that goes into a single-family home or an apartment, onto the buyer or the renter. It's pretty simple economics 101. What you don't often hear, though, in these fee adjustment discussions or considerations, is the fact that most of us don't buy our homes, especially, we don't buy our homes with cash, especially young, first-time homebuyers. They take out a mortgage. That means that any of the cost components that goes into the total value price of the home is amortized, typically over 30 years. So what I would like to understand when we come back is what is the amortized additional expense, if you will, that's associated with this fee adjustment? So that we understand what, what those first-time homebuyers especially may be looking at if the fee were adopted? And the assumption is, is taken that, you know, especially in this, this type of market, it doesn't seem like it's any, anytime soon, what we can expect the builder to then pass along? Because that, to me, has everything to do with the long-term affordability that, or consequence that this fee has for someone that's going to be paying a mortgage payment for three decades. So if that can be added to the list of information that gets presented to this board when we, when we reconvene on this, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. All right. I do not have, oh, Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think Mr. Larkin offered, it might be helpful, just since we're getting a full presentation, there was some discussion about the Quimby Act. If there was something that you or your folks wanted to offer, I know that there's been questions raised about the calculation that's been applied to existing district facilities that wasn't raised in the letter that we received here very, you know, very late hour. But if there's, I guess I would just say, if there's something that folks wanted to address, now's the time to do it. We're going to come back on this, but if there was something that folks feel would be additive to the conversations and questions, it might be useful. And if you choose not to, that's fine. I'm not, again, I'm not going to ask you a specific question, but I did think that the discussion around the Quimby Act was, was important.
Do you want to just give a legal perspective? Okay, I'll have Bob Thurbin, our legal counsel, talk a little bit about the legal perspective about the Quimby Act.
Okay. And Patrick, you folks received a copy of the letter as well?
No.
Oh, you didn't get a copy of the letter that came to our board? Okay.
Last night.
Yeah, from last night. Okay. So we can get you a copy. And we're going to come back on that, but we'll make sure you get a copy of that. So you're a little bit of disadvantage, but probably know the arguments, so.
All right. Supervisor Natale's staff is trying to get a copy of that as well. We didn't, we weren't copied on it.
Well, I...
It's posted on the agenda item for anyone that needs it.
Okay, very good.
Letter in the table.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Frost and Supervisor Natale, and the rest of the board. My name is Bob Thurbin. I'm general counsel for the district. And I think the issue, I want to get drilled to the point. I know everybody's been up here a long time. I think the issue that may be showing up, I haven't seen the letter that came or the information that recently came from BIA. But I suspect the issue showing up has to do with some property that is designated as special use, and they label it special use, and we've labeled it special use. It has to do with a parcel that was a shooting range and other portions of the, of the district that they, that are calculated into the Quimby calculation that eventually gets you up to the, close to the five acres that everybody was talking about and questioning. And the, the special use designation doesn't have any legal significance under the Quimby Act. And I wouldn't say it's a frustration, but one of the issues every agency confronts with the Quimby Act is that it doesn't define park or recreational purposes. There's no definition as to what that means. But the Act mandates that there will be the dedication of, of park land and, and property for recreational services. That's a requirement, but it doesn't really define that. So everybody, including the developers, looks for a definition. The developers, simply in the letter that I reviewed originally and that we commented on, they simply alluded to the special use and that that somehow should be excluded from it. So what we do is we reach to the best authority that we have. And if you look at the Quimby Act, where do we go? We go to the legislative history. We look at the act on its face. And it clearly says that you, you have to dedicate land for park and recreational facility services. Okay? So we start with that definition, and we look at definitions within the act. The definitions don't exist within the act. So then you have to look at decisional law. So we look at decisional law. There is no decisional law. Courts haven't said anything about what is a park recreational service. It's silent on those decisions, particularly as it relates to the act. So we go down to the next source of authority, which, there's an attorney general opinion that was issued back in 1998 that confronted the issue of park versus recreational services. The Attorney General at that time was rendering an opinion having to do with the purchase and expenditures of funds, and there was a dispute over recreational facilities or recreational services. And the Attorney General opined that the fact that the Quimby Act is written in the disjunctive, that there's two mutually exclusive possibilities, it indicates that the recreational component is not limited to services associated with public parks. My view of the issue the developers have raised is that because there may be recreational services, they don't equate to park services. But that was, that position was, you know, disputed and a different result with the Attorney General. And the Attorney General relied on, and I'll wrap up here in just a minute, because I know I'm being a little long-winded, but I want to get you to the authority, the ultimate authority that may be helpful to you. The Attorney General relied on provisions of the California Education Code, which is actually the act that empowers districts, all districts and agencies that have the power to provide recreational services. It empowers and defines those services. And that's where you find the definition of recreational services. And the bottom line is, when you get to Section 10901 subsection C, that's where we finally find our definition of recreational services. And it's a very broad definition. It encompasses cultural activities under common, under community, under the Community Recreation Act, which is Ed Code Service, Ed Code 10900 to 10914.5. And it's, special districts may organize and promote and conduct programs of community recreation. And then here's where we finally get the definition of recreation. Recreation is defined as an activity voluntarily engaged in, which constitutes the physical, mental, or moral development of the individual or the group participating therein. And then it gives a list of those kinds of activities, such as drama, art, science. And then it talks about nature study, nature engagement, aquatic sports, athletics, and any informal play. So that's where you finally find that definition of recreation. So any attempt, at least in my view, to distinguish the terms park and recreational services as two different components, but that you don't dedicate land for recreational services, is not consistent with at least the Attorney General's opinion and the intent of the act. So I think that may address one of the issues, although I haven't seen the most recent communication.
Okay. Well, you'll get a chance. Thank you for sharing that. I would just say that, you know, you'll take a look at it, and I'm sure, sure you'll weigh in. We're going to come back to this, obviously, but that was, that was helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay. I do not have any further questions, but we do have a public comment. So maybe it's a good time to take the public comment.
Okay, could you please transfer the caller?
And I do have one person in the audience to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, we can do that.
I didn't mean to go out of order.
It's all right. We'll let them go first this time. Thank you.
Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hello?
Yes, you can start with your comments. Yes, you can start with your comments now, you have two minutes.
Thank you. This is Chris Norm with the North State Building Industry Association. As you know from our correspondence, we are in opposition to the park level of fee currently being proposed. But we do not relish sending notice of these issues at the last minute. We provided our comments to county staff a month and a half ago, but these concerns were never communicated to the board. So it was incumbent upon us to provide this with information. This nexus study is calling for one of the highest park fees in the region, but it was made available to the public only two days before it was approved by the CRPD Board. So the BIA and other members of the public were never in a position to, to be able to review the nexus for the benefit of the CRPD. We have prepared an analysis that shows the park fee is illegally calculated to demand more parks than is justified under state law. The CRPD is using a closed shooting gun range and a golf course to count as the park to justify their current fee level, which is what you just heard the county or the attorney describe. The nexus study overcounts existing park acreage and does not count other sources of revenue or costs that should be paid by existing residents who will use the community This park fee is higher than 75% of the park fees in our region, or should say a park district in our region. It would be $9,000 per house, when there are numerous other park districts in our region and other comparable areas of California that have found ways to charge half as much. Indeed, our analysis shows that the park fee should actually be closer to $5,000 a unit. You know, we are in grips of a serious housing crisis still, and the higher park fees contemplated here will adversely affect housing affordability in the county and jeopardize the viability of projects that will contribute to the meeting of the county's housing goals and its affordable housing goals. It's our position that this fee should be correctly calculated and that the board has a policy prerogative to make a, to make it consistent and to ensure that housing can be, can continue to be made available to the public at reasonable prices. We believe that there could be some modifications made to this fee that would make this justifiable and correct, and we look forward to working with the county and CRPD in that endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And we do have one speaker in the audience, Cherish Castaneda. She was here a minute ago and I saw her walk out. Cherish Castaneda.
I, I think Lydia's out there trying to figure out.
I think they're bringing her, maybe, maybe not.
I'm sorry, she's outside of the building now, so I'm not quite sure if she's.
Okay. All right, then we'll proceed and, uh, I don't have any other board members or speakers in the queue for this item. And so, and I know we were going to continue it, do we need to vote on the continuance and put a date on it?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd punch it, yeah, I would suggest that, it sounds like with the information received here, we could probably do a quick turnaround, but we meet again on October 19th, is that correct? That would give us roughly two and a half, three weeks for certainly the district, for those who've registered their concerns and county staff to then, I think, address those to the degree that can be addressed, and then obviously they'll still rest with this board as to what we decide to do. So I would suggest that we can pick a, even pick a time so that, you know, maybe Phil you can help us with that, but I'd like to move this to October 19th, and I don't know what would be the appropriate time.
Uh, it would be easier for us if we could not do as time certain, but as long as we have the date certain, because we just need time to move around the schedule.
And again, we got, I think, a number of folks involved, obviously, that if we could look to where, and we can gauge it, again, that's not all in your purview to, to gauge how the board discussion is going to go. So if mid-afternoon was better than morning, I'll certainly leave it to you, but we can, but I, okay, I would, I would move that we continue this matter to October 19th. We'll have a time to be determined and certainly thank folks for your presentation, and I think it'll add opportunity for any additional response or information, and that's my motion.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Natoli and a second by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank everyone for the presentation and for being here to explain all that to us.
See you back in a few weeks.
See you in a few weeks, yeah.
Okay, for item 26, you are acting as the Board of Supervisors and the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. This is to conduct a Retax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, we know that as the re-Tefra. Public hearing for the tax-exent bond issuance for the acquisition, construction, and permanent financing of mutual housing on the Boulevard in an amount not to exceed $45 million. Authorization to execute bond documents with Stockton Boulevard Housing Associates or related entity for the financing of the project. And authorization to execute home loan documents with a developer for the project in the amount of 6.9 million with a 57-year term for construction and permanent financing of the project.
Good afternoon, Board. Christine Weckert with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. I'm here today to recommend approval of the final bond and loan documents for Mutual on the Boulevard. In December 2019, the Board approved financing for the permanent supportive and workforce housing development located on Stockton Boulevard. As a reminder, the developer is Mutual Housing of California, and they're going to construct three three-story buildings and townhomes with 127 1, 2, and 3 bedroom units. The affordability restrictions will last 55 years with incomes between 30% and 60% of area meeting income. 65 project-based vouchers have been awarded to the project for homeless families, and the county Behavior Health Department will provide supportive services for the 50 no-place-like home units. In addition, Lutheran Social Services will dedicate a case manager and other staff to the project. Excuse me, finally 20 hours of after-school and other residence services will be provided. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the home loan and the bond documents for the financing of Mutual on Boulevard, and staffs available to answer any questions you may have.
We do have a question from Supervisor Kennedy.
Actually, not a question, just a comment. Not surprising. I think this is a project that I've been working on since I've been a supervisor, and it's just these things take a long time to cobble it all together, they're complex, but it's a great project. We all know Mutual and know the work that they do. This is exactly what we need more of in our community, and I'm proud to have it in District Two. So with that, if there's no other questions, I will move staff recommendation.
Sorry.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Kennedy and a second by Supervisor Desmond and a comment by Supervisor Natoli.
No, not the comments much, when we read into the record, the item has said a 57-year term, it mentions 55-year term in the staff report, so which is it?
Yes, so there's two.
You want to see this, both?
It's both, because during, the construction period is two years, and so we count that, and then there's 55 years after construction of the project. So you must regulate 55 years after construction, but our legal documents say 57 to allow for that construction period.
Okay, that's all I have, thanks, I support.
And I also want to also pass on to SHRA as well as our building and planning departments, because these things are so time-sensitive, you have a short period of time to, to start work on these projects before you'll lose funding, and they have done everything they could to work together cooperatively and fast-track this to the degree that they could. So I want to thank staff for that as well.
Thank you Supervisor Kennedy, and we all echo that, and thank you Christine.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask that you would open the hearing and close the hearing?
Please. Oh, yes, at this time I'll open the public hearing, and I have no, no one.
Signed up, and we don't have any phone calls either.
And I'll close the public hearing, thank you. We're done. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right.
Okay, for item 27, you are acting as the Board of Supervisors. This is to request to approve special business license application for Joshua White of J&amp;J Services.
Good afternoon, sorry, good afternoon Supervisor, Board of Supervisors. My name is Ben Lamera, I am Director of Finance, and I am bringing this item forward for approval of the application for Joshua White of J&amp;J Services to obtain a special business license from Sacramento County. Mr. White completed and passed his background check with the Sheriff's Office. He's had no negative contact with law enforcement since 2011. In 2021, Mr. White submitted an application and a request for review by the Board of Supervisors to the Clerk of the Board. In accordance with Sacramento County Code Section 4.10.155, the Board of Supervisors may grant or deny his application. Our office is recommending the Board grant approval of Mr. White's special business application for J&amp;J Services. That's all I have. I do have Diana Ruiz of County Counsel's Office here, and Laura Jacobson from our office, she is the Business License Manager. Joshua White was here earlier, unfortunately he had to head back to his office and work.
Thank you, and Supervisor Desmond had some comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ben. I, I support this item and, and wish Mr. White success with his, with his business. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not have any public comments. Not in queue.
Oh, I did, I did have Cherish signed up for this item, but she's not here, so, or, no, I did not, she was on 26, sorry. Yes, we're good to go. We have a motion by Supervisor Desmond and a second by.
Second.
Kennedy, Supervisor Kennedy, and please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
It's 12:30, and we have a closed session on seventh floor, and this meeting is hereby adjourned, or in recess until 2:00 PM. Good afternoon, everyone, welcome back to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is September 28, and it's 2:00 PM, and we're back in session. Would you please call the rule for us? I sure will. Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
And you have a quorum. Thank you. Our first item of the afternoon.
Okay, for item 28, this is the District Directed Allocations for American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds.
Good afternoon, Amanda.
Good afternoon, Chair Frost, members of the board. I'm Amanda Thomas, the county's Chief Fiscal Officer, and I'm here this afternoon to present a potential process for district-directed allocations of the county's funding under the state and local fiscal recovery program of the American Rescue Plan Act. As you may recall, at the July 27th board meeting, the Board approved priorities for the use of the county's state and local fiscal recovery fund allocation under ARPA. The Board also directed staff to develop a process for board consideration that would allow for district-directed allocations, which is what is being presented today. As directed, for the county's initial $150 million allocation, district-directed allocations would be $5 million per district, or $25 million total of the $150 million. The proposed process for these allocations is intended to ensure compliance with all usage, monitoring, and reporting requirements as specified in the U.S. Treasury's interim final rule, and subsequent compliance and recording, reporting guidance for state and local fiscal recovery funds. These requirements apply to all projects using this funding, whether they are funded with district-directed allocations or from the county's broader funding allocations, and include specific requirements for use, tracking, monitoring, and reporting. As you know, only certain expenditure categories are eligible for this funding, and projects must be scoped in such a way to ensure eligibility. Additionally, consistent with guidance issued by Treasury, projects should identify metrics and outcomes that generally focus on equity and underserved communities, and some of these metrics and outcomes are predefined for certain expenditure categories, and some need to be developed based on the project scope. As with all uses of federal funds, federal regulations must be followed for competitive procurement, contracting, and sub-recipient monitoring. And projects must not duplicate benefits with other federally funded programs in place. This means that the county is responsible for ensuring that costs reimbursed with these funds for both the county and for all sub-receipients were not already funded by another federal program. Finally, there are very specific and extensive reporting requirements that the county is responsible for complying with for project metrics, outcomes, and expenditures, including quarterly project and expenditure reports and annual recovery plan performance reports to U.S. Treasury. Before getting into the overview of the process for district-directed allocations, it may be helpful to identify some of the potential benefits of proceeding with these allocations. While this is by no means an exhaustive list, some benefits may include the fact that each of you knows best the needs of your district, and under this process would be able to target assistance based on that knowledge and to underserved communities within your district. This allocation of funding would allow each of you to create your own distinct project vision, objectives, and desired outcomes, to the extent those might differ from projects approved under the county's broader funding allocations. This process could also provide a more direct avenue to collaborate with other jurisdiction, jurisdictions within a district, although it should be noted that collaboration across jurisdictions, for example, with cities within the county, could also be, could also be accomplished on a county-wide basis. And these allocations could allow for the funding of initiatives not included in the broader priority funding allocations, or could allow for specific enhancements to those broader county-wide efforts.
Excuse me, Supervisor Serna has.
Thank you. So I wanted to catch you while you're on the slide here. Obviously, our districts are very unique, right? So some districts are comprised much more of unincorporated area than others relative, mostly to the city of Sacramento as the biggest city, but we have other, the six cities scattered across the county and other districts as well. What about special districts? So if special district, let's say a park district, Park and Rec District, that either because of size or mission is ineligible for ARPA funding, but let's say that this gets adopted, this process gets adopted, could a supervisor who principally has unincorporated area in their district work with and vet a vision here, as you mentioned, that might accomplish multiple objectives relative to the county's charge to continue abating the consequence of COVID, but also serve a special district in their territory who is ineligible for ARPA funding?
Thank you Supervisor Serna, that's a good question. Yes, I think that could be accomplished under this process. It also could be accomplished, you know, on, on a broader sort of county-wide basis as well, so either way.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out because it's not just about municipalities versus unincorporated area. I mean, we, if we look through all the layers of specific mission governance, we, you know, we, we have, you know, dozens of, of special districts scattered across the county in addition to all the cities that we have in the county, so just want to point that out.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we talked a little bit about some of the benefits. There are also some potential challenges and reasons to perhaps consider not proceeding with district-directed allocations. So as noted previously, all uses of these funds must comply with federal procurement rules, including requirements for competitive selection, which limits discretion in terms of how the funds are awarded. That means that, for example, the discretion available in district-directed funding for the transient occupancy tax grant program would not be possible for this funding because of those requirements. Another consideration is that subtracting $25 million from the initial $150 million overall allocation could reduce the investments the county is able to make in large-scale county-wide projects, like those addressing homelessness and housing, although, as mentioned earlier, it is possible that district-directed funding earlier, it is possible that district-directed funding could supplement and support those projects as well.
Excuse me, Amanda. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So, you mentioned TOT, but what you didn't mention is the fact that there are two types of TOT that have different levels of discretion applied by different parties. And in fact, there, in terms of proportionality, I'd say that that model of what we have in place now kind of mirrors what I've suggested here in that there is a portion of the TOT that is really left to the district supervisor working with their own staff, given the parameters, given the rules, given the process that we work within, but there's a portion of those funds that are left with us. So, I just want to point that out because you left out that part of comparing it to TOT, correct?
So, correct, yes. In terms of the model being, you know, a portion sort of more countywide allocated and a portion more district-directed, you're right. I think that comparison holds true. I think the point that I was trying to make is because of that source of funding, there's a lot more discretion in terms of how it gets awarded, and we don't have that discretion when it comes to this use of funding.
I understand.
We also have a question from Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Amanda. I appreciate this. So, in kind of the hypothetical that Supervisor Serna mentioned, like say a Park District, again, you know, my district being unincorporated, I certainly see these issues arising, you know, in the unincorporated area with some needs not being met. In that case, say it's a Park District or a special, some kind of special district that maybe they're able to get some funding through ARPA for some certain projects, but there's other real issues that could, things that could benefit the community. How would that, say a Park District has a project that I want to support in my district, what would the competitive selection process be? In other words, would the Park District be taken out of that equation and they'd have to, they'd have to put in a proposal just like anyone else would?
I think it would depend on how the project was scoped and, you know, what the intended objectives of the project would be, you know. And additionally, if the Park District were sort of a subrecipient of this funding, they would be subject to those same competitive selection requirements in terms of how they were using the funding. So, that may be
That makes sense.
how we would look at it in that case.
Okay. And then another question you did mention, which, and I get that, subtracting from the county's, you know, larger scale projects, but for instance, if the county and we'll be getting a, you know, presentation from the county on their plans for how to spend the ARPA funding, if, for instance, I see the county is going to spend X number of dollars, you know, in District 3, for instance, to do some infrastructure improvements or something like that, would a supervisor like, well, me in District 3, be able to apply some of these funds to kind of enhance what the county is already going to be doing in that area? And then would that be subject to a separate competitive bidding process or could it just kind of dovetail or piggyback on what the county is doing there?
So, another good question. I think if I understood correctly, there's sort of a larger countywide project that's been scoped to with a particular objective, and with your district allocation, you would like to provide additional funding for that effort and perhaps maybe targeted in a certain way. I think that, if I understand that correctly.
Yeah.
So, I think overall that effort would have, you know, competitive selection requirements. So, depending on how the money was being spent, that project would competitively select either the subrecipient or the contractor carrying out the work, and the funding that supplemented that would, I would imagine, be part of the same process.
Okay. Thank you.
Would this money, would we use it in the same way we use top funds? In other words, would we have to go out for RFP on every little thing we did or, I just wonder if we know how much extra cost is associated with all that administrative process if it's required?
Yeah, so that's another good question. And yes, I mean, you know, the sort of default is that it would be some sort of competitive process or RFP. I think there
On our decisions at our level.
Well, for each, at the project level. So, however the project is defined, is going to determine, you know, what the services that are needed would be, but in general, there's going to be a requirement, because these are federal funds, there's going to be a requirement for a competitive selection process in terms of determining who those funds are awarded to.
Thank you.
Okay. And then finally, last point on this slide, larger projects, and this really gets to Chair Frost's point, larger projects are a more efficient use of funds than smaller projects due to the administrative requirements associated with each project regardless of project size. And fewer project transactions overall result in reduced risk to the county of noncompliance or potential disallowed expenditures. For these reasons, if the decision is made to proceed with district-directed allocations, we would recommend considering establishing minimum project amounts.
Excuse me, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So, on that last bullet, and I brought this to the attention of our CEO during our briefings, is that totally get the economies of scale when it comes to project funding, but what this doesn't suggest is that if you, let's say it's the city of Sacramento that has all but the necessary $2.5 million to accomplish a large, quote-unquote, "large" project that serves their constituents who are our constituents, and if this were to be adopted, I could say, "Well, you know, I found $2.5 million to fulfill that last $2.5 million that's needed for that large project. It's just not the county's large project. It might be the city's large project, but it's still serving the same people." That's, that could also be an argument for this process, right, to be able to actually enhance those large projects.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
The next several slides are just going to walk through at a very high level how this process could work for each project while ensuring compliance with the rules governing the use of this funding. So, for each step, there's a role for the district office, departmental staff, and what we're labeling ARPA staff, which just for purposes of definition would be centralized county executive office and Department of Finance staff, supported by specialist resources as needed, who would be responsible for the oversight and administration of all projects funded with the county, state, and local fiscal recovery allocation, not just those funded with the district-directed funds. Oops, sorry. Skip ahead. So, at this vision and objective stage of the project, that would really, for each project that would be funded from a district's $5 million allocation, the district office role would be to define the vision, objectives, and desired outcomes for each project. Based on the project objectives, the appropriate department and program manager would be identified. So, as an example, if the project vision and objectives included assistance to small businesses, the Office of Economic Development would be identified as the department based on the alignment of the department's mission with the objectives of the project. At this stage, the role of the centralized ARPA staff would be to review the project objectives for consistency with eligible expenditure categories for this funding. In the project scoping stage, the district office and department program manager would collaborate on further defining the project, including the target population, required resources and activities, timeline, and budget. Additionally, the department program manager would assist in identifying evidence-based practices as required for the use of these funds. Following our example of assistance to small businesses, project scoping would include such things as the types of businesses targeted, whether this program would be a grant or a loan program, the additional resources that might be needed, for example, a third-party administrator, and the overall budget and amount of funding for each applicant. Use of evidence-based practices in this case would include identifying, based on evidence, how the target population was negatively impacted and how the program would address those negative impacts. One challenge highlighted by this example is that if such an allocation resulted in disproportionate funding available based on location, the county should be able to demonstrate why that disproportionate funding was justified based on evidence of disproportionate impact. In this stage, the role of centralized ARPA staff would be to ensure processes are in place to check for duplication of benefits and to check for expense eligibility and potential alternate funding sources that could be used, including from other available ARPA programs. Finally, all fully scoped projects would be packaged on a regular basis for Board approval of appropriation adjustments and contract authorizations as necessary. In the project execution phase, district offices would receive updates on progress and outcomes from the department program manager, who would be responsible for implementing all phases of the project, including procurement, contracting, subrecipient monitoring, and tracking and reporting of both expenditures and project metrics and outcomes. ARPA staff would review and process all project reimbursement requests coming from the department, monitor expenditures compared to the overall allocation, and compile required information for consolidated reporting to Treasury. So, at a very high level, this is what we have developed as a process that could potentially be used for district-directed allocations of the county's ARPA funds.
Excuse me, Supervisor Serna.
Sorry, she's right at the end, so I meant it further.
Okay, I'll wrap up. So, really just in terms of action and next steps, we are asking the Board to provide direction today on whether to proceed with district-directed allocations of $5 million per district for a total of $25 million from the county's initial allocation. Following that, we plan to return at the next meeting with overall recommendations for program funding allocations, which would incorporate that direction. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Amanda. I appreciate the thought that went into this. I just want to make it clear, as I did during my briefing yesterday, that depending on the will of the Board on this subject today, this would be interpreted, or we would all have the common understanding that this process and this understanding would apply to whatever the next second tranche of federal funding is that the county may receive, whether that's another $150 million or a separate amount that falls under the same, you know, ARPA context, that this same kind of proportionality in terms of district-directed allocations is applied, that would be applied to that amount as well, correct?
Yes, if that is the direction.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Does that conclude?
That concludes my presentation.
I have a question.
Supervisor Natoli, please.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Amanda. As it relates to the amount that you would have as a floor or minimum, have you given thought to that? Is it, I mean, I don't disagree with you with, you know, this particular approach. I think, you know, we've had some, you know, comparative approaches over the years that's evolved, certainly the accountability and meeting, you know, the criteria and looking at communities with particular needs. So, any staff thoughts about that? Were you looking at $100,000 or a $500,000 amount? I'm just curious as to, relatively speaking, what number would kind of fit your, from accounting standpoint, tracking standpoint, and then to your point, to be able to fund projects and/or, you know, approaches that meet, you know, the various categories of priority needs in our community.
Sure. So, as you know, it's always a balance, you know, between, you know, wanting to sort of fund as many different things as possible and kind of recognizing those economies of scale. And in this case in particular, given the, you know, administrative requirements that are associated with each project, I think that would, that would lead towards, you know, perhaps the higher end.
Sure.
So, you know, I think if we look at it in terms of proportion to the overall $5 million, you know, $500,000 would equate to, you know, roughly
10%.
10. That, you know, I think that that might be a good place to target, but obviously
No, that's fine. Again, I know you're speaking to the five electors, but I'm just getting some sense of it, and I think that that probably makes sense, that, you know, there may be difference of views about that as we approach this, but those are reasonable, you know, apportionments out of, as you said, out of a $5 million allocation that, and it could, you know, $500,000 coupled with some other efforts, you know, and maybe some other resources that folks have available could be a significant infusion and help address, you know, a variety of needs, certainly in districts, but in our community as a whole, so.
Yeah. And I think, again, thinking about that as a minimum, understanding that, you know, larger projects are going to have a larger
Yeah. Right. Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. We don't have anyone in the queue with questions, so I do have a couple of public comments on this item. And we also have people on the phone as well after you're finished with the in-person.
We will begin with Mark McKibben. Good afternoon, Mark. Haven't seen you for a while.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Frost and members of the Board. My name is Mark McKibben. I'm from Orangevale, and I come before you today to ask you to please allocate a portion of the American Rescue Plan funds to provide hazard pay or premium pay to Sacramento's essential workers. I was gratified to see, both in the documents for this meeting and at previous meetings, that premium pay was listed as a priority. I wrote an op-ed in Sacramento, be in June, about this subject, and I put my email at the bottom of the article, and the responses I received from several essential workers in Sacramento emphasized to me how important it is that we provide premium pay either through a countywide funds or by district funds, as you're discussing right now. I believe that allocating premium pay to essential workers in Sacramento would be a force of both market power and moral power, giving workers purchasing power and capital to invest in Sacramento's economy, and affirming the dignity of work and providing an oasis of hope in a season that for too many has been very dark. Please use a part of the federal American Rescue Plan funds you have received to provide premium pay to Sacramento's essential workers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Cherish Castaneda.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, I have some documents for you guys today because this has been, this has been crazy. This money, if you guys are accepting this American Rescue money, the second pack of money you're talking, these numbers are so big, and $100,000 or $500,000 can put 100 homeless people into homes. You know, that's crazy to spend on administrative fees. I'm sure that people are getting enough money in their paychecks, first off. I'm not okay accepting this money because to this day, Dr. Kasari has yet to prove to us that Sacramento County is still in a state of emergency. We have asked repetitively and we've been ignored, and it's time that you guys need to start doing an investigation into the claims of Dr. Kasari. What allows her to make these health mandates on the residents of Sacramento County with inflated death rates? People are coming forward, whistleblowers, telling you that the documents of death certificates have been altered and marked COVID. That is falsifying data and falsifying information. That is illegal and it is fraud, okay? You got to, you can go to prison for that. There was a set of 150 scientists and doctors who just examined the COVID-19 injection and found some horrific things. They are labeling it premeditative murder. Is that what you guys all want to be connected with? Are you not doing your research? Where is Dr. Kasari's information that we have asked for her, the isolation of SARS-CoV-ide? Where is it? Where is the information we've asked about the validity of the PCR tests? Where is it? I ask you, do you intend to trespass on the men, women
You have 15 seconds.
The men, women of Sacramento County? Do you intend to trespass on me, a woman of Sacramento County? Because that is exactly what you're doing. I give you 72 hours to demand an investigation into Dr. Kasari's claims. Otherwise, I will hold you all personally and financially liable. And here's your documentation for today. Clerk of the Board, I'd like to give this to you
Yeah, you can just leave it right. You can. Cherish.
Thank you.
Oh, to you? I can give you a copy as well. I made multiple.
Okay, and that's our last speaker on this item, and
Yes, I'm on the phone, I think.
Oh, yeah, we do. Okay. Can you transfer the caller, please? Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. This is Richard Dana with the Center at Sierra Health Foundation. I'm calling in support of item number 28, the District I'm calling in support of item number 28, the district-directed allocation of ARPA funds. As you've mentioned, each supervisory district is different, and as supervisors, you have a strong understanding of the needs and items that, with the right amount of financial support, can be an asset in your district. Having a small amount of funding available for district-related support within the guidelines of ARPA makes sense. The Center at Sierra Health Foundation encourages you to vote yes on item number 28. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person.
Please send the next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Robin Erz. I'm District 3. Just calling today to share some thoughts regarding the ARPA funds and the proposed idea of $5 million per district. My one concern about that is that equality doesn't equal equity. So if you give $5 million to each district, you know, it sounds like nice things equal, but each district is not necessarily affected by COVID the same way. So I think it would be more prudent to actually look at our community as a whole and see what areas have been more impacted by COVID. And that can be done in a bunch of different ways, I'm sure, to kind of determine how each district and areas, each part of our community has been impacted by that, so that we're using money effectively to address how COVID has impacted our communities. So that's really kind of my main point, is that just because we give $5 million out equally doesn't mean that we're actually being the most affected of Sacramento County as a whole. One district may have a big, huge impact, and we only provide $5 million, or then maybe even one portion in a district that's impacted more than others. So just I want to encourage you to consider that as something to look at, whether simply just giving out $5 million as a kind of a, you know, just a cover-all kind of thing may not really be the best use of those funds. You really should be looking at, like, permanent affordable housing as a solution, something that we need to be putting money in funds and thought into very seriously. You know, in two days, at this point, the eviction moratorium will be ending, so there's that potential that we're going to have drastic impacts on our communities, and I think that we should be considering how, well, we can be using funds to address housing concerns within our community all over Sacramento County and not strictly just dropping $5 million in the bucket at each county or district and hoping that works well. So just hope you take that into consideration to make your decision today.
You have 10 seconds. Thank you.
Okay, and then if you could transfer the next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. I'm a licensed psychologist in private practice, and I'm also a resident of District 2. While I am pleased to hear that the board is considering that each district in our county does have unique needs, I am concerned regarding the equal disbursement of $5 million each to each district. It's clear that the federal ARPA's directive to cities and counties is that the funds are to be used equitably. Equity does not equal equality. Equality means each individual or group of people given the same resources or opportunities. A clear example of this is if I get to allocate $5 million to each district. Equity recognizes that each person has different circumstances and allocates the exact resources and opportunities needed to reach an equal outcome. Now, a clear example at this point is that ZIP Code 95823 located in Supervisor Kennedy's district, in the district I reside in, has the most COVID cases in all of Sacramento County. That means that 95823 residents are having to experience the devastating effects of this pandemic on human lives, and therefore their needs are greater and differ from more privileged ZIP Codes such as Rancho Marietta, Faroe Oaks, or Carmichael. According to the Deloitte survey, though, that information was absent. Deloitte failed to collect significant demographic information from respondents such as ZIP Codes that would assist the Board of Supervisors to make decisions regarding ARPA funds that would truly assist our community equitably. We have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to address that county's most urgent inequities. Using these funds to make equity-based investments will enable our county to build back better. I implore you to refer to the Fund Distribution Plan issued by Los Angeles County, and I have sent each supervisor a link to that plan before you make any decisions regarding ARPA funds. Again, let me remind you that this county declared racism a public health crisis in November 2020, and yet this county is contributing to this health crisis by failing to use principles rooted in social justice to inform them on how to allocate the best use of ARPA funds.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Thank you for your consideration. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate the last caller reminding this board of the declaration of racism as a public health crisis, and really want to express the need for however you allocate these funds, you know, district allocated and even toward larger pots, that racial equity and health equity in particular also need to be at the forefront of these allocations. This isn't money to be used for pet projects of individual supervisors by any means, or to pad, like, existing county coffers with institutional organizations that already have more resources than we. This is to provide immediate relief and help for those of us that are most vulnerable and most impacted by this pandemic. And to really get that, make sure that we are listening to people, we really need members of each district's communities to be participating within how this money is going to be allocated, what projects the community really wants. And I want to really press all of you to look at creating participatory budgeting processes with it, like, if you are going to allocate these funds amongst each of your districts, to really look at participatory budgeting process that allows the community members themselves to design the process, brainstorm their ideas for how the money should be spent, and then develop those ideas into proposals with volunteers and budget delegates to develop them into feasible proposals, and then allow your residents to vote on those proposals, and then fund the winning projects that are most popular with your community members. That is democracy. That is what we are all here to supposedly serve and actually advocate for. That's what you all are put on the board to do, represent our interests. And, like, we really do have a need and interest in really having a say in how our money is being spent. Because as existed right now, and like, even before, like, long before this meeting, we don't have that level of trust or even participation within these kinds of budgeting processes. So if we're going to take this step to allocate these funds amongst each district, I really hope that those of you supervisors representing your districts actually go directly to your constituents and allow them to participate, not spectate this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please send the next caller, and I believe this is the last caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hello, I just want to say that I don't propose allocation for the ARPA funding. I'm looking at the percentages now on the table, and it says that you guys want to contribute 70% of the funds to increase the supply of permanent housing in Sacramento for those who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. I've been at risk of homelessness since about 2016. I've been applying to affordable housing projects, long-term housing projects since then, have never had my name called up on the list. You know, I've had to leave my home due to violence, wasn't able to get hotel vouchers, all the shelters in this area are full, and so I just don't believe that 70% is going to really help people like me who are homeless and have been homeless since 2016. I'm tripled up in my household. There are three generations in my household. There's no way that I will ever be able to afford, you know, my own place, given COVID-19 situation, with the funding and things going to these mask policies and the vaccines policies that not everybody agrees with, and, you know, when you don't agree with it, we're losing our jobs, we're being fired, and so now, you know, we're out of a job, we're unemployed. Where's the money?
You have 10 seconds.
Being allocated to people who are being fired due to COVID-19? I don't see anything about that for the economic response. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes your public comments.
Okay, thank you. So bring it back to the board with Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you, Chair. So first, let me start by thanking staff, beginning with our county CEO, Anne Edwards, for hearing us loud and clear and coming back the way her team has, and special thanks to Amanda for the presentation and thinking carefully about the opportunities and the challenges and the benefits of what's in front of us. Hopefully, my colleagues understood with the line of questioning that I had as I interrupted Amanda, that, you know, I still believe that this could be a very helpful, complimentary, and, I think, well-proportioned way to carefully appropriate these funds. And as a couple speakers pointed out, and as staff has also acknowledged, you know, the five of us know our districts extremely well, doesn't mean that staff doesn't know the needs in the community too, but I think we just have a unique perspective because our jobs are very different. And I think that one-sixth of the allocation, which this is proposing, is modest, but I think as Supervisor Natoli pointed out in his line of questioning and back and forth with Amanda, I think, you know, $100,000 or $500,000 can go quite a long way in terms of community need, depending on the scope of work for that project and the location and, you know, the type of project, whether it's focused on economic development or public health or both. And so I remain very committed to this idea. I think it's a good one, and I would just, again, remind my colleagues respectfully that, you know, last year, I think we rightfully, you know, were criticized in some corners of the district, or some corners of the county, for relinquishing too much control and leaving it up to staff to come up with the means to appropriate what was then the CARES Act funding. And so I think this is not only proportional, and not only complimentary, to what will be a separate but complimentary, parallel process for the majority of the funding, but it also speaks to our accountability to the people that we serve. So I'm going to, and I know Supervisor Kennedy's in the queue, but I'm going to move that we direct staff to proceed with the district-directed allocations as presented. Ask for a second.
One second.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna has moved the item, and Supervisor Kennedy has seconded it.
Supervisor Natoli.
I mean Supervisor Natoli, and at this time Supervisor Kennedy has a comment.
Thank you, and, you know, this is just one of those cases where friends can disagree. I do not support the concept, and I think I was fairly clear when it was first proposed. I understand the concept and what, you know, my colleagues would like to do. I just, for a few reasons, I do not support it. One is I do believe that Dr. Seko actually makes good points in that it doesn't really focus on equity to the degree that I think it should, instead focusing on arbitrary political boundaries, and that just doesn't make sense to me. I don't think it's good public policy. The efficiencies and economies of scale that Amanda brought up, I think, are good ones. And just to hearken back to the CARES Act money, and Supervisor Serna, you know, the last thing I think any of us want to do is revisit that process, regardless of this discussion. But, you know, all along, I was asking back then, the previous administration, for a plan. I think that what we're doing now, now, there's some questions about the contract that we had a discussion about earlier today, but overall, we are actually going down the road of having a countywide plan that I think will address equity, address the needs of the residents of Sacramento County, void of political considerations. And, you know, I think that by continuing down the path of a countywide plan that meets the needs of county folks, regardless of where they live, but because it's the equitable thing to do, is a better road and why I don't think that this should be divided out and spent in that way. I also think that it's fraught with potential problems. Anybody who has had to adhere to the federal government and their requirements and strings attached and all of that, you know, I think decentralizing this is dangerous and could be fraught with difficulties down the road. You know, that's not to say that I don't think that we can do this in a better way than the CARES Act money. The CARES Act money, in my opinion, was determined how to get spent, and I agree with Supervisor Serna, that we, you know, none of us had been through a pandemic before, and we probably did allocate too much say to staff. We did it for what we thought at the time, if you recall the discussion, for what we thought was the right reasons, and that was so that we could be more nimble and not have to wait for, because things were happening so quickly, we didn't want to have to always wait to have a board meeting to make these decisions. I don't think we're doing that anymore. We're getting, we've gotten away from that, and we've got a much more thoughtful process going on here, and I'm confident that that thoughtful process will lead to a more equitable use of this money where it's needed the most. And so that's why I respectfully do not support this concept.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I also want to thank county staff, thank you, Amanda, for your hard work and figuring out how we can do this. I support this. I think that, you know, one of my concerns initially when I heard about this is, well, you know, the unincorporated parts of the county already don't have as many opportunities for funding as some of these incorporated areas, but it seems to me there's some provisions that will protect against that. I mean, it wouldn't be able to duplicate funding in a city that folks in that city are already receiving. Is that, that's accurate? And I'm also very confident that the county in its larger ARPA spending plan will demonstrate its commitment to the unincorporated parts of the county that I'm left behind over the decades by investing in these underprivileged communities. So I do look forward to having the ability to try to help shape what the investments from ARPA funding in my district, and I do think that, you know, I did originally think that this would be analogous to the TOT program and maybe easier to administer, but I think the program you've laid out, the structure of the process that you've laid out, Amanda, will have the appropriate safeguards in place, and so I just thank you again for the discussion today, and I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did just want to note, because I know we're going to be busy in this again in a couple of weeks, Dr. Sacco did attach, as she noted in her verbal comments, you know, at least one example of that of LA County, who, you know, was developing a spending plan, and I know, Anne, you and your staff will work on that, but again, you know, I think it shows the framework that can be developed as it relates to how allocations are recommended, and obviously, there's a lot of tremendous amount of detail that flows from that, and of course, LA County's looking at almost $1 billion. a billion dollars in their allocation plan, um, but relative scale, obviously, to, to our county and to its needs. I would say that, that, um, I think that the alignment here and as outlined in the staff report, but as we've talked about previously, with, um, needs in our community, the categories which are going to be of a priority, uh, and, uh, and I think additional work around that. We heard from, you know, callers today about processes that can be, um, uh, you know, called upon to, you know, get greater detail, and it can be done within, whether it's within a, uh, particular community, uh, within a, you know, an area of, of service delivery and/or one of the categories. And so I think there's opportunity for, you know, further engagement and definition and refinement of that in, you know, utilizing examples that folks have called in about and, and other examples as well. And I guess I would just say too, that if, if, you know, you know, particular members of the board are uncomfortable and/or choose not to utilize, you know, the approach of his outline here, you can leave it in the pool.
That's right.
And, and it will be a conclusion that we will all work together. And I, you know, again, I, I would just say that I think as five members coming together in this deliberative, you know, uh, process, but certainly in, in these chambers on a regular basis, we have the ability to do that. And I think that over time, it may be that, uh, that's the best choice. And that choice remains, even with this direction. I mean, uh, that would be, you know, guidance given that's been suggested here today. So again, I have, um, you know, a comfort level and a confidence level that ever how, uh, we choose to do this and whether it's, you know, calling upon the entire allocation within the parameters that have been outlined and/or leaving a portion or all of it in the pool, that we're, you know, we're going to benefit this community in many, many ways and hopefully address many of the issues that have been certainly raised today, but that we hear about on a, on a regular basis. And so, um, and it is a grand opportunity, no doubt about it. But I, but I'm supportive of this today. And I think we have, this, you know, expands the options, but it doesn't say we have to, you know, do this in any particular district.
And I just want to say that, um, I did have some concerns about, you know, maximizing, you know, our potential with the money, but I, I love the idea, uh, since I have the second largest unincorporated district, um, I, I can really relate to what all the others were really saying about, you know, having that, um, ability to target some of those underserved areas that there's never enough or, you know, that, that we can potentially make, you know, help out, um, that otherwise it's difficult to get the funding. So I, I think, um, it's an exciting opportunity, uh, for us to be able to, and we know our districts better than anyone else does. So I agree with Supervisor Serna and I support the idea of it, and I'm going to support it. So we have a motion from Supervisor Serna and a second from Supervisor Natoli. And, uh, we did, already took public comment.
Yes.
I'm a little off today. Please vote.
And the motion passes with Supervisor Kennedy registering a no vote.
Thank you. Uh, next item, please.
Okay. Um, item 29 is the Report on COVID-19 Response. And we do have, um, Dr. Casiri is on the phone line through the Skype.
Good afternoon, Dr. Casiri and Siobhan.
Good afternoon Board. I'm so sorry to interrupt you, Siobhan. Thank you Lisa. I wasn't paying attention to the time. We have five minutes to wait. Would you like to do your nominations instead?
Yeah, that'd be great. That's my fault. I'm sorry.
No, I should be doing my job. Um, item 30 is your nominations, and let me grab that. You are contin- are you guys ready?
Yes.
Okay. Um, it's 2:55. Okay, you're continuing to October 5th, the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Mental Health Board. And then you're continuing to November 2nd Cemetery Advisory Commission, the Children's Coalition, the Developmental Disabilities Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And today's first item is Adult and Aging Commission.
Uh, Chiefs recommend nominating Eduardo Rubal Keva and continue the remainder to November 2nd.
Community Review Commission.
Please nominate Darrell Lewis and continue the remainder to October 19th.
I can't, I don't have my glasses. Um, Human Services Coordinating Council.
Um, Chiefs recommend continue to October 19.
Okay. Um, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee.
Chiefs recommend continue to October 19.
Okay, Rio Linda Elverda Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Serna.
Please continue until November 2nd.
And then Supervisor Frost.
Please continue to October 5.
All right. Sacramento County Behavior Health Youth Advisory Board, Supervisor Frost.
Please continue to October 19.
Sacramento County Youth Commission, Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to October 19th.
Okay, District 1. And then Supervisor Natoli.
This is for the Youth Commission?
Yes, Sacramento County Youth Commission.
Okay, then I would nominate, uh, Ravi Tamanya.
Okay. And then, um, you have one more seat. Do you, when do you want to continue that to?
Uh, hold it over till, I guess, to next week, please. October 5th.
October 5th, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. This one is, this one's long. The Public Financing Authority of the County of Sacramento Metro Airpark Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, Supervisor Frost.
Chiefs recommend nominating Matthew Kiesling and waive the process.
Okay.
Second.
And we have a second by Supervisor Serna. Please vote. Mr. Natoli, okay. Unanimous vote. That concludes that. Um, and then I think that's it. So we just have a couple of minutes. I need my glasses.
Okay, we're back. Meeting is called back to order from our short recess. Or I guess we didn't recess, we just paused.
I'll reread the item into the record again.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, item, this is item 29, Report on COVID-19 Response. I know that one by heart.
Okay, good afternoon Board. Uh, Dr. Casiri is joining us on the phone today. And so I, what I'm going to do is just start with some opening comments and updates, and then she's going to go ahead and we'll turn on the PowerPoint that we submitted to the board, and she'll walk through that. So we are very hopeful. The last few weeks, we've seen our case rates coming down, and that, and that is great news for Sacramento County. We wanted to thank the Sacramento community for all of its vigilance in terms of getting vaccinated, wearing masks. This has been a really great thing. And so thank you to everybody, and thank you to the board for your support. During our previous board reports and on our dashboard, we've been providing you with some information that have to do with our overall vaccination rates. And I wanted to explain a little bit about our dashboard because we've received a, a couple of questions. One thing on our dashboard is we've been talking about vaccination rates in terms of the overall population of folks who have been vaccinated. And that's what number you see on our dashboard. One of the numbers that you'll see in the board report that we submitted to you, however, is our vaccination rate based on the eligible population of folks who are eligible to be vaccinated. So that includes, um, people over 12, so adolescents and adults. Based on those rates, you'll see in the report, and we'll start adding this to future board reports, that for the eligible population, Sacramento County is now at 65.2% of people who are fully vaccinated and 72.2 who are at least partially vaccinated. So that's great news. Although this still is about 5% lower than statewide averages, it is climbing every day. And we wanted to also just mention that, um, like I said, we're going to continue to report on this. What this new number shows us is the effectiveness of our partnerships and of our outreach efforts to get the vaccinations into the community. And so, um, that's why this is such an important, uh, number. And next, uh, week, October 5th, when we come back, Sierra Health Foundation and partners from the SAC Collaborative will be coming back to present on what some of those vaccination efforts are. So we're looking forward to that. So thank you again for your efforts as you represent us in the community and, and helping to get the word out there. A couple of other updates I wanted to give. On September 24th, last Saturday, the CDC and the FDA approved the Pfizer BioNTech COVID-19 booster for individuals who are at an increased risk of hospitalization and death due to COVID-19. At this time, the booster is recommended at least six months following the initial series for the following groups of individuals. For individuals ages 65 and older, they're recommending it. For individuals who live in long-term care facilities, and for individuals ages 50 to 64 with underlying medical conditions or who are at an increased risk of social inequities. And the CDPH website clearly outlines what some of these underlying medical conditions are, such as heart disease, lung disease, cancer, diabetes, and then there's a list of other, um, things, disabilities, where folks may be immunocompromised. Additionally, it lists out what inequities, um, that they are wanting us to focus on, including, um, folks who live in areas of the community that may be at an increased risk and communities of color. Additionally, people who may consider receiving a booster based on their individual benefits and risks include individuals ages 18 through 49 with underlying medical conditions, individuals 18 to 64 who are at an increased risk of exposure due to their occupation or due to living in an institutional setting. So this includes folks like first responders, education staff, food and ag workers, manufacturing workers, corrections workers, US Postal Service workers, public transit workers, and grocery store workers. The boosters are approved for folks who received the Pfizer vaccine. Uh, for folks who received Moderna or Johnson &amp; Johnson, there's still research being conducted. So I think that's really important to point out. California is ready to administer these boosters, and the way you would go to get a booster if you're eligible. If you are, if you are, um, at risk because you're immunocompromised, uh, primary care physicians are starting to reach out to folks. You can also get it through the current channels, which include healthcare providers, clinics, and neighborhood pharmacies. And then Californians can also visit myturn.ca.gov to make an appointment. Um, right now, our county's efforts are really focused on first doses and getting the flu shots out. However, we are monitoring the need for boosters in the community. And if we see that the regular channels can't keep up with them, that's when we'll consider whether adding more clinics for booster-specific shots makes sense. I also wanted to add that vaccinations for youth ages 5 through 12 are anticipated to be approved and available this fall sometime, October or November. Additionally, there was another public health order that came out on September 24th that has to do with requiring COVID-19 vaccination providers to request patients' email addresses and mobile phone numbers for the state's immunization registry. The goal of this registry is really to make immunization records more accessible. So as folks are being required to prove that they're immunized, they'll have a digital access to a verifiable vaccination record. Nobody will be turned away, however, if they do not want to provide a phone number or email or don't have one, they can still get vaccinated. So no one's being refused as a result of that. And then finally, AB 361 requires the health officer and the board to issue a statement that allows for and supports teleconferencing to allow for social distancing in public meetings that are subject to the Brown Act. A letter will be posted tonight on the county's website regarding these flexibilities so that we can comply with AB 361. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Casiri for her report, and then we can answer any questions as well. Thanks.
Good afternoon Madam Chair and Supervisors. So Director Quatari is going to help me by advancing the slide. So since there is a delay with, uh, the web feed, I am going to assume that, uh, you are keeping up with me. So, uh, we'll go to slide number two. So what we want to do today is just to give you an overview. We've done this from time to time where in addition to the information that we give you in the update that you have in your handouts, and also the information that is on the dashboard, we give you, uh, um, a, um, a view of what we are seeing in terms of trends. And, um, this helps in understanding what is going on and also, uh, why we're taking certain steps. So when you look at slide two, there are three, um, images on there. The top one is a chart that shows, um, the, uh, cases by week. So it's a bit different from what you see on our dashboard because on our dashboard it's, uh, a daily count. But this one gives it's a daily count, but this one gives you a weekly count, so it gives you an overview, and you can look at a much greater timeframe. And what you see is a comparison between the winter surge and the surge that we have just been through. The colors that you see refer to the different age groups, and on the legend on the right, you can see that the blue is for 0 to 17, the green is for 18 to 49, and the orange for 50 to 64, and the yellow 65-plus. And a few things that you can see just by looking at this is especially when you look at the current surge that we're in, is that the section of blue is much larger than what we were seeing during the winter surge. And then, of course, the green is still the largest piece, and then you have the orange, which also has, you can see that there has been an increase, especially during this surge as well. In the bottom two tables on the left, you can see what the total cases have been compared to the last 30 days, so that helps us to see what, any differences in trends that have occurred. And a while back, I think we had mentioned to you that we had seen an increase in cases among the African-Americans, but we're not seeing that anymore. So on this one, you see that overall African-Americans constitute 13% of the cases, and in the last 30 days, it's 10.9% of the cases. One thing to point out again also is with the Hispanic, they constitute 27% of the cases, and the white 46.9% of the cases. On the right side, the table on the right just shows you the rate per 100,000, and you can see that the native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders have the highest case rate, and that is because earlier on in, oh, actually, the African-Americans have the highest case rate now, but earlier on, it was the native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders that had the highest case rate, and that was because earlier on in the pandemic, they were hit really hard with large outbreaks, and we worked very closely with them. And so enrolling out the vaccine, actually, we worked with the community leaders to have specific clinics just for that population.
Dr. Casirier, this is Sue Frost. I was wondering, are these positive tests or actual cases? Test positives or actual cases?
Well, when you test positive, you're considered a case.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And actually, my apologies, I think I went ahead, because on slide two, it's the age, and I forgot to point out that the 0 to 17, which includes the children in schools, there is a 11.7% increase, and that's because when the schools opened, we started seeing an increase in cases. So my apologies for the mix-up. So we're on slide three now?
Yes.
Which shows the cases by race ethnicity. And in the top chart, you can see the colors again represent the different race ethnicities. The gray bar is the white, and then the orange is Hispanic. The non-Pacific Islanders, Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders, it's a very small one, so it's kind of hard to see on the chart, but the orange is the Hispanic, green is the black or African-American, and then blue is Asian. And that just shows you what, the trends that we have seen over time. And when you look at the tables, and this is what I had started talking about, you can see that a while back, we had talked about the, an increase in the African-Americans, but we're not seeing that anymore. It's now dropped to 10.9 in the last 30 days. And then on the right side, you can see the cases, case rates. And as I mentioned, with the African-Americans, now they have the highest case rate. Next is native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders, and as I mentioned before, they had a large outbreak earlier on in the pandemic, but we work very closely with that community. We can go to slide number four now.
Dr. Casirier, can I just ask a follow-up question for you to explain before we move on, which is the rate, in the bottom right-hand corner box, rate per 100,000? Can you explain what those numbers mean, the 67, 45.9, for instance, rate per 100,000?
It is the rate. So what we do is we look at the population. This is something that we use routinely in epidemiology, and it helps us to compare, because if you look at the two tables at the bottom, if you're just looking at the numbers, you can see that by proportion, the white population has the highest number of cases, about 46.9% of the cases. But when you look by case rate, it gives you an idea of just the impact of COVID-19 on just that population, and that's where you see some of the disparities. As I mentioned, that's where you see that the native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders have one of the highest case rates, and the African-Americans as well. So these are different ways of looking at the data and being able to identify the populations that are most affected.
Thank you. I'll switch to slide number four now.
Yes. So slide number four is, shows you the deaths, so I'm switching now from the cases to the deaths. And I wanted to point out, actually, that we have a process for being able to verify that a death is due to COVID-19. When a death is reported, we do ask that if it's in the hospital, that the hospital send us the hospital records, and we have physicians who review those records. We also, if it's a coroner's death, if a person died at home, the coroner also gets that information, contacts the primary care provider to find out the history, and also in some situations actually has to do testing if it was not done before, before we're able to verify that it's actually a COVID death. And the CDPH does provide us with criteria that we need to follow in order to verify that a case is due to COVID. So the same layout that we have on this slide is the deaths by age. The yellow shows you 65-plus, orange is for 50 to 64, and then the green is 18 to 49. A few things to point out on the top chart is, as you can see, the yellow is much smaller, and that's something that we have talked about before, that because the long-term care facilities were, there was a huge effort to get the residents vaccinated. In fact, their vaccination rates are between 80 to 90%. That with this most recent surge, we did not see the large outbreaks that we saw in the previous surges, and so you see that the yellow section is smaller. But what we have noticed is with the 50 to 64, they have been much more impacted this time around, and that's why you see that the bar for the green is, the orange is a lot larger than with previous surges. In the bottom two tables, it shows you the total deaths for, compared to the last 30 days. And I just want to point out that the reason that you see the grayed-out numbers is the epidemiologists asked that we mask any numbers that are less than five. So the 0 to 17, the total number is less than five. And in the table on the right-hand side as well, you see that 0 to 9 and 10 to 19, those are shaded out as well. A few things to point out, and again, it's shown in both the top chart as well as the tables, is the 50 to 64, when you look at total deaths, they constitute 19.1%, but when you look in the last 30 days, they constitute 36.4%, so an 18.9 percentage point difference. So this time around, the surge has impacted this age group a lot more than previously. And then for the 65-plus, in previous surges, it was 74%, whereas now it's dropped to 49% of the total deaths. And then on the right-hand side, again, it shows you the death rates by, per 100,000, and you can see how it gradually increases from 1 per 100,000 for 0 to 9 age group, all the way to over 1,000 for the 80-plus. So this is the part of the reason, again, why there was so much focus on vaccinating people that are over the age of 65, those in long-term care facilities, and why this, with the release of the booster guidance as well, this age group was identified as a priority group for the booster dose because of the higher, much higher risk of death.
Doctor, I didn't hear why we blocked out the cases for the 0 to 19. I was zoned out, and I didn't hear it. Can you repeat the reason why?
It's because those are less than five, and so our epidemiologists, this is something that we do usually in epidemiology, is if a cell number is less than five, we mask it.
Oh.
And that's for privacy reasons.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We'll go to slide number five. And this shows deaths by race ethnicity, and again, the top chart shows you the colors. I won't go all through each of them, but you can see that in general, when you're just looking at the number of deaths, the purple or gray has the highest bar, so most of our cases are in the white population. At the bottom, when you look at the left side, it shows you the table by race ethnicity for total deaths, and then compared to the last 30 days. A few things to point out. One is that with the African-Americans, we have seen an increase. Overall, 11.7% of the deaths, and in the last 30 days, they constitute 16.9% of the deaths. And also the Hispanic and white, we have seen a little bit of an increase in those groups as well. On the right side in the table, it shows you rate per 100,000. And again, the native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders, 310 per 100,000, has the highest death rate. As I mentioned before, they were hit really hard, because this is a very close-knit community. They tend to live in multi-generational households, and so when they started having COVID cases, they were, the entire household was being impacted. So they experienced a lot of deaths at the beginning, and as I said, we worked really hard with them to provide them with masks, to provide them with hand sanitizer, and then as the vaccine rollout came, we actually had specific vaccination clinics just for that group. We'll go into slide number six. So slide number six shows the hospitalizations, and you'll notice that the layout is different from what I have shown for the cases and deaths. And the reason for that is that the way that we get the hospital information that we post on our dashboard, we're just giving, getting the count, the daily count, and so we don't, in order to be able to get the demographic information, we have to go into a different database. So I'm giving you the information just for the last 30 days. A few things to point out is the median age is 45. In previous surges, the median age has been in the 60s, so that's another point, again, that shows that a much younger age group has been impacted during this surge. When you look by age group, the 18 to 49 constituted 42% of the cases in the hospital at that time, and this was actually the same throughout, has been the same throughout. And by race ethnicity, the whites constitute 44% of the hospitalizations, and blacks or African-Americans, 11%. We'll go to the next slide.
Okay.
Slide number seven. So shifting gears a little bit here to talk about the vaccinations, and Siobhan has already pointed out the difference in the numbers that we show on our dashboard, which is population of vaccinated for the entire population, whereas when you look at what the state puts out, they're looking at those that are eligible, so 12 and up. And both, looking at both of those numbers is helpful, as Siobhan pointed out. So again, just pointing out that we are slowly making progress and getting to where we want to be, which is 70% of the population at least partially vaccinated. Slide number eight. And this is actually information that is on our dashboard, so this is vaccination by age, and you can see, as I mentioned before, that those age 65-plus, their vaccination rates are pretty high, 85%, over 85%, and the same for 50 to 64, 78%. But when we get to the younger group, the 12 to 19, and 20 to 29, we still have a lot of work to do, because those are, at least now, it's over 50%, but you can see that there is a gap and a difference in the vaccination rates there. So we continue to work with the different community-based agencies and the schools to get vaccinations out. Slide number nine shows vaccination by race ethnicity. So you can see that the bar for the Asian and native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders is in the 70s, and so we still have a lot of work to do with the other groups, because they are still in the 40s. Many of these are in the communities that underserved, and so that is why we have been focusing our efforts in having pop-up clinics in those zip codes. Slide number 10. This is also information that is on our dashboard. This is a question that we're asked a lot about the effectiveness of the vaccine and how many breakthrough cases we're getting. So the top chart shows you the case rates for those that are vaccinated compared to those that are not vaccinated. The red line is for those that are not fully vaccinated. The yellow line is for overall, and then the blue line is for those that are fully vaccinated. And you can see that at the peak, the case rate for those that are not fully vaccinated went all the way up to 70 per 100,000, whereas for those that are fully vaccinated, the highest it got to was 20 per 100,000. Fortunately, all the lines are in the downward trend, so we're hoping that we'll continue seeing the, this trend continuing. And the bottom two boxes show you vaccination status of cases and vaccination status of those that have died, and so you can see the differences there. Slide number 11. This is actually a slide that we showed before, but we decided to include it again in this presentation as we continue to talk about the effectiveness of the vaccinations. And especially if you focus on the right-hand side, you can see the differences for infections. Those that are not vaccinated are eight times at higher risk. For hospitalization, 25 times at higher risk, and for deaths, 24 times at higher risk. So again, these are all pointing to the effectiveness of being vaccinated. Shifting gears on page, on slide 12, to geographic distribution of vaccination rates. We are happy to report that as we've been watching this chart on the state website, we have seen that the green continues to increase, and now we have fewer and fewer census tracts that are actually in the pink. And this is some of what we've been doing with the community-based agencies, is just the focused approach. We did that with South Sacramento. We did that, that with South Sacramento, where they focused on the zip codes that were less than 40% vaccinations. And they were very successful in being able to increase those numbers. So we're continuing to work with the areas in North Highlands. And thank you Supervisor Desmond for all the support you have provided in being able to continue working in that area. And our hope is that by the time we finish, everything will be green. Slide number 13, and this is my last slide. Just wanted to show you, because one of the questions we've been asked is, are we really making any progress? So this just shows you over time, the changes in vaccination rates in some of the zip codes that we have targeted, such as the 95660, where August 19th, it was at 38% vaccination, 27th, it was 39, and September 15th, it was 42%. And so you can see for each of them, there's been a slowly, a very slow but incremental increase in vaccinations. So want to take the opportunity again to thank all the supervisors for the support you've provided with the different vaccination clinics and also our partners in the community, community-based agencies. And as Siobhan pointed out, you will hear from them at the next presentation, where they will talk more about the specific work that they have been doing in doing outreach to be able to increase our vaccination rates. And that's the end of our slides. So I'll turn it back to you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Casiri. Supervisor Serna, I had some comments and questions.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Casiri, for the presentation and explanation of the, the numbers and the charts and maps that have been included in the PowerPoint. I suspect there might be others on the board that have the same question, but do you have any better sense today than you, than you have in the last, I don't know, two weeks or month even, about the disposition of the state Department Health, Healthcare Services or Public Health in terms of any expected change in protocols? You know, we, we could continue to hear from our constituents on both sides of, of the issue, but those that, you know, want to see a loosening of some protocols, those that are very concerned with, those that are not respecting existing protocols. So I was wondering if you can, in addition to regaling us with the, the numbers today, also provide some insight about what you know or hear, what you're hearing from the state?
Sure. And I just want to point out that in talking to the other health officers that do have a masking mandate for indoors, all of us in looking at the trends did notice that there was a slowing down in cases after we instituted the indoor masking mandate. And also, we believe that it has helped us a lot in being able to keep our schools open. One, because it does provide additional protection, especially for children that are not able to get vaccinated. And then also because the state did allow for modified quarantine for exposures where both the person that has COVID and the person that is exposed are wearing masks. So this has really helped in being able to allow us to keep the schools open and keep as many children as possible in, in-person learning. As far as when we are going to end the local mandate for indoor masking, we've been discussing that. And even though we are, I have to point out that we are looking at several factors, and all of them are pointing in the right direction in terms of cases, in terms of hospitalizations. And our expectation is that reaching a case rate of 5 per 100,000 would be a good point at that point to end the indoor masking mandate that we have for Sacramento County. The state one will still remain, meaning that masking will still be required for people that are not vaccinated, especially indoors. And masking will still be required in certain settings, such as schools and congregate settings. Our hope is that, looking at all of the factors, we, we could get, get there pretty quickly or even not have to wait until we get to the 5 per 100,000. But we felt that this was a target that was reachable and that would give a sense of comfort because actually, this is about where we were at in June 15th, when California opened up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you very much, Dr. Casiri, and appreciate the, the presentation. Looks like we're, we're certainly heading in the right direction. And I just, I love the inclusion of the, the slide about outcomes by vaccination status. I mean, that is so compelling. You know, I, I think nothing is perfect, but we are taking the right approach here. And we're closing the gap, certainly in those zip codes with your, your help, Dr. Casiri, you and your staff in, in North Highlands, Fodil Farms area. So I really appreciate your additional efforts there. And I think we gotta keep, keep the pedal to the metal, so to speak, with this. And I'm certainly here and available to continue helping. What about, and thank you, I appreciate Supervisor Serna asking that question because I also get inquiries all the time. How about on the, on the flip side of things? I mean, any, any discussions right now about any additional mandates or, or increased impositions of restrictions that you anticipate either at the state or local level?
And I think Director Siobhan, when she was giving her update, let you know what the newest mandates or health orders we have received from the state. Especially now that the numbers are heading in the right direction for Sacramento and for the state as a whole, I do not anticipate that there will be any additional restrictions. Right now, I think everyone is just busy trying to meet the deadlines for the vaccination mandates that, I think the next deadline is coming up, October 1st, for healthcare. And then there are others that are coming up for the jail as well. So we are all busy trying to make sure that we meet those deadlines.
Do you mind if I ask who sets the deadlines?
The state.
The state. These are state health orders.
Do they come down from CDC or just emanate at, originate at the state?
These are state health orders.
Okay, thank you. Sorry Supervisor Desmond.
That's, I'm done. Thank you very much, Dr. K.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Casiri, and thanks, Dr. Cathari. I wanted to ask about, I know we've gotten some information, actually, this morning, we were inquiring through our office about county clinics, and we had the schedule for the week. And again, thank you for that. I know that the local television stations, when I catch them in the morning, oftentimes are pointing out where those clinics are. I know they talked about the one in Cortland today and one other one. I guess there's actually two more today elsewhere in the community. But what I wanted to ask about is that as we kind of winding down from some of the pop-up clinics that were solely for the vaccine, we're, I think as you talked about, Siobhan, that, you know, we're kind of dual-purpose, you know, flu shots and, and vaccines, you know, the third dose for some of those populations that are greater risk. Do we have, I guess my question is, do we have sufficient financial support for that? I mean, I don't know what we anticipated. We do flu clinics annually, but now we've got into this third dose, I don't know what's coming down from CDC as far as funding, if anything, and whether that, this ought to be a part of consideration as we're looking at some of the funding that's come down through other, other sources. But what's our capacity? And I know we had partners, I mean, we, that had helped us with pop-up clinics and with, you know, some other matching resources to help us, you know, move out. And we continue, as you've gone through many charts here this afternoon. So I guess I'm curious for one or both of you, what's it look like for the months ahead?
Dr. Casiri, do you want me to take that, or would you like to?
Well, you can start from the top.
Okay. So the state is not allocating additional resources at this point for the booster shots because they are anticipating that the, the providers who are already giving those, the clinics, the primary care providers, the pharmacies, will be able to keep up with that demand. However, this is a conversation that has been happening on a weekly basis with the state to determine kind of what that demand is going to look like with boosters and whether additional resources will be required. At this point, we feel we have the resources necessary to continue with the cadence that we've been going. However, we are monitoring that closely to see if there's an increased need and we see an increased surge. So we're, we're getting it out there in the dosage that we, we hope to. Dr. K, do you want to add anything to that?
Sure, yes. So as you pointed out, some of the resources are ending, such as Curative. So in that aspect, we will have reduced capacity for large vaccination clinics. But we do have several of our partners in the community that have helped us with some of our clinics, large clinics in the past. And they're on standby. And they said if we let them know that we need to have some additional high-throughput clinics, that they will be prepared to be able to assist us.
So, but our sites are typically free, right? Whereas the other fixed sites, pharmacies and such, if you have insurance, they're covered. Otherwise, there is a cost share potentially at those other locations? Or is it still free at all the fixed sites, the pharmacies and wherever else?
No, it should be free at all the sites. There might be co-pays for when some people go to their own primary care physician as a regular checkup and get, you know, but they're, they're free at the clinic sites.
Okay, so if they go to pharmacies, they're still, the vaccines are still free. So they have a neighborhood pharmacy, one of the, those that are participating, they can?
Correct.
How is the availability of vaccines? Were sufficient availability?
Yeah, I'll ask Dr. Casiri if she has any updated information, but I'm not hearing of any shortages at this point. Dr. Casiri?
That's correct. We are not experiencing any shortage of the COVID vaccine at this time, and we'll continue to monitor that. We are, as Siobhan pointed out, we are having, the, the clinics that we are setting up now are going to be dual flu as well as COVID vaccinations. And so, of course, we are dependent on the state for allocation of the flu vaccine, and we have enough to get us started. And we'll be ordering more as that becomes available.
Are we running into any situations where we're actually having expirations of the vaccine before we're able to? I know once you open some of those, that obviously they've got a matter of hours. But I gotta imagine there are other dates on them. Are we running up against that because of inability to administer them timely or, or lack of folks to receive them?
We have worked very slowly, not slowly, very carefully with the state on that. And we watch very carefully the expiration dates. That's one of the major responsibilities of our immunization team is to make sure that they're tracking the, the expiration dates. And so there have been times where the expiration date has been extended. So that has helped us to be able to continue using that vaccine.
Okay. And is it, is it correct that later this week, that the CalExpo site closes permanently?
The CalExpo site will still be open for testing. Thank you for asking that question. But Curative is not going to be offering vaccine after the end of this month. So, but we do have other sites, plenty of other sites that are offering the vaccine. And I think that's what they were looking at in terms of whether they, you know, this was a good time for them to exit that. We still have a huge demand for testing, so they will continue to be able to help with the testing.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. I have no one else in the queue, and I just want to ask one question, and it relates to some information that I got from some of the nurses that work in, in some of the hospitals. And I have been told that the protocol in the hospital, when they're, I guess, admitting a patient, is if they've had a vaccine, they do not get tested for COVID. But if they have not had a vaccine, they get tested for COVID. And so I wonder if it's possible that there are some people who have COVID who are never, who are not getting counted, if that could skew the data that we're looking at as far as, you know, vaccinated versus unvaccinated that got COVID. And then my, my, my follow-up that kind of relates to that is that the PCR test, I guess, was discontinued as of December, but we're still doing the PCR tests. But, but so how does that, how does, how does, how do these protocols impact the COVID counts versus, unvaccinated versus unvaccinated?
Sure. So with the vaccinated versus not vaccinated, when individuals show up at a hospital, the assessment is done based on the symptoms. And I have worked very closely with infectious disease doctors and the nurse teams that are setting up these protocols. So if you do have nurses who are saying that that is not being followed, if they could kindly contact us so that we can find out. Because my conversations with all of the hospitals is that the vaccine, the, the testing is based on symptoms. The only time where the vaccination status is considered is for the serial testing that is done for the employees. And that is because of the system that has been set up by the, the state for either vaccine verification or testing for those that are not vaccinated. But otherwise, for anyone that has symptoms, the testing is based on their symptoms. And I personally was involved in developing those protocols. As far as the PCR testing, I think what has caused some confusion is that the CDC set, released a letter stating that, because if you recall, at the beginning of this pandemic, the CDC was the only one that was able to do the PCR test. And so we had to wait each time when a person showed up with symptoms, the doctor had to call Public Health, and then Public Health would call CDC. We'd get the specimen, send it over to the CDC. But as time has gone on, there are a lot of different tests, very accurate and valid tests that have been set up and have gotten FDA EUA approval. If you go to the FDA website, I think there are over 35 right now, different tests that have EUA approval. So what the CDC was saying in that letter is that they were just going to end the, the one test that they had started off with because they don't see that it's needed anymore. It has nothing to do with the accuracy of the PCR. And I believe I did send you all supervisors documentation on that from the CDC website about their continual approval that, of the PCR. I also want to state that the PCR process or mechanism for testing is not new. We have been using it for other diseases. I'll give you an example. We use it for STDs, for chlamydia and gonorrhea. We also use it for TB. And the advantage with the PCR test is that you're able to get results a lot quicker. For example, when we, prior to the PCR for TB, we would have to wait anywhere from six to eight weeks before getting a culture result and knowing whether somebody had TB. Now with the PCR test, we're able to get those results in one to three days. So you can imagine the difference in patient care that, that, that results in and how much it has helped us in being able to do our work. So the PCR is a type of test that we are using for a lot of other diseases as well.
Okay, I had one more question. Now I forgot, so I'll put it off and maybe, I don't see anyone else with questions. So do we, we do have some public comment on, on this. Were you done, Dr. Casiri?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. We do have someone on public comment, but I believe she's, she left the building. Charisse Castaneda. Charisse Castaneda. She's gone. Okay. And do we have anyone on the phone? Flo?
We do. Can you go ahead and transfer the caller? Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, Michael Huang, MD, trained at UC Davis and board certified in family practice. I'd like to discuss the strategy importance of early outpatient COVID treatment to prevent hospitalization and prepare for the upcoming cold and flu season. The norm of outpatient COVID treatment is to wait and see if you get worse and go to ER if you become critically ill. We would not accept this as a reasonable protocol if you have a urinary tract infection, so we should never accept zero outpatient treatment if you are given a diagnosis of COVID. We have approximately 2,000 primary care physicians in the greater Sacramento area serving 2.6 million people. Chance of suffering symptomatic COVID-19 a year is about 1%, which translates to 26,000 people. So on average, every primary care physician will treat 13 symptomatic patients a year. We can easily create a tight safety net if every symptomatic COVID patient has easy access to early outpatient treatment. As we stand today, very few doctors provide meaningful early outpatient COVID treatment with large gaping hole in the safety net, resulting in many necessary hospitalization and sometimes death. Last week, I answered a heartbreaking plea for help from a nurse to save a 30-year-old man with the advanced COVID at a local ICU. He lost his life two days later and left a widow and young daughter. He went without outpatient treatment and follow-up before ending up in ICU. He could have easily survived if outpatient treatment was provided three weeks earlier. I therefore strongly urge that every symptomatic COVID patient receive an examination with close follow-up until symptoms improve by addressing the following area. One, stop the viral replication. Two, reduce lung inflammation. Three, prevent block clot formation. FLCCC.net and AAPSonline.org provide effective and easy-to-follow treatment protocols. If we educate physicians on the importance of early treatment and act as a group, we will create an extremely effective COVID-19 safety net for our community and will be prepared for the upcoming cold and flu season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm Dr. George Fareed. Thank you for including me today. I'm a family medicine physician in the Imperial Valley of California. I graduated from medical school in 1970 from Harvard, and I've been in family medicine for 31 years. I treat HIV patients and the whole range of patients of general medicine. But we were in the epicenter for COVID-19 in California, and Dr. Tyson and myself used a regimen that we've had almost 100% success with, including, for early treatment. We knew that that was needed, and we fought to get that recognized. I was just in Rome speaking at the International COVID Summit. We've gotten international recognition because we've had eight or 9,000 that we've treated and saved because of early treatment. And we were dealing with therapeutic nihilism throughout this, unfortunately. And so it's so important. That's a big point I want to make in this brief statement, that the treatment can be, is very effective, it's very treatable if one uses good judgment, uses agents that are antiviral like hydroxychloroquine, ivermectin, fluvoxamine, amantadine, and in combinations with other agents. And so we, I spoke in Rome to the Senate of Italy and to the whole world. We were streamed live into 140 countries and had 100 million streaming from Rome about two weeks ago. I spoke in the Senate in November of 2020 on early treatment. I've just been trying to get this recognized, so it's good to speak to you. That's my message. Early treatment, very effective when really didn't need vaccines. It should have been approved and pushed from the very beginning, but we're fighting to get that accepted and all doctors aware of this. So that's what needs to be done. Unfortunately, there's still been a stigma detention or a sort of a brainwashing, I would call it, where most doctors are just going with the party line of send people home, not to give them any early treatment, and then they end up in the hospital. And so I treat in the hospital. I still see that, and it's very sad. We could prevent, we can't, we can completely prevent hospitalization and death with early treatment, and we've treated Dr. Tyson and myself up to 8,000 now, high-risk patients in the Imperial Valley of California, and 99.96% recover. Only those that get it late, get the treatment late, end up in the hospital. So that's my message. It's great to be asked to speak to your supervisory group, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Fareed.
You're very welcome.
We don't have any questions at this time, but we appreciate your statement.
Oh, it's my privilege. Thank you very much. Everyone stay well and healthy. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Kirsch. I'm Executive Director of the COVID-19 Early Treatment Fund. I've been featured on 60 Minutes for my work on early treatment. I spoke at the most recent FDA public hearing on vaccine safety. My remarks drew worldwide public attention. Dr. Casirie is very familiar with me and my work. This morning, I emailed Dr. Casirie a new paper that was published two weeks ago in a peer-reviewed medical journal, a very credible source. The paper showed that the vaccines kill more people than they save for every age group. Nobody has pointed out a flaw in the paper that would change the results. The conclusions agreed with the results that our scientific team has done independently. And Sacramento is science-based. It's imperative that you respect the science. The science also says that early treatment drugs such as ivermectin and fluvoxamine work. Ivermectin has been validated in multiple peer-reviewed systematic reviews and meta-analysis that were published in peer-reviewed medical journals, which everybody knows is, of course, the highest level of medical evidence. And fluvoxamine has been validated in three studies, including the widely respected Together Trial that was sponsored by the Gates Foundation. The Fareed-Tyson Protocol, which you just heard from George, has a relative risk reduction of over 99%, which makes it safer and more effective than any vaccine. I would be happy to do a recorded Zoom call with Dr. Casirie if she disagrees with anything I've said, so that there's a public record of the discussion, so the public can see for themselves who is telling the truth and who is not. Unfortunately, public health officials don't like to be challenged on important topics like mask-wearing, vaccine safety, and early treatment protocols because their positions are indefensible. They typically run and hide from experts who dare to challenge their beliefs. I hope that Dr. Casirie can be an exception, and we can have a civil discussion on these important issues with our team of experts. But I suspect this is unlikely to happen if you don't expressly request it. You say that you are science-based. Will you walk the talk and require that Dr. Casirie has a recorded discussion with her team of experts? That's the question that the board should answer. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for receiving comments. I have some questions in regards to the last meeting in reference to Agenda Item Number 35 and your handling of COVID in general. There have been a number of excellent questions asked by the people that you represent. The questions were based on thorough research and valid concerns, questions including, why is natural immunity not being discussed? There were many more excellent questions. I would like to know where we find your public response to these questions. I also have a couple of other questions. Where do we find the summary of the comments that were received on this agenda item? And why are we not including VAERS data in our stats? And when will you be including the VAERS data so that we can see a full picture of the vaccine injuries? So those are questions I would like answers to. I'm not sure where to go to receive or to view your responses to the questions. In addition, I have one comment on the situation that was happening today. Breathing free is one of the most important things we can do, and you have no right to discriminate against those who cannot wear a mask because they cannot breathe. They are protected by law and have a right to be present. If masks are truly effective, then those wearing the mask should be protected. So safety is not a valid response. These individuals deserve equal access. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, I am just appalled at Dr. Casiri. She's been coming in every, every time, giving basically a religious sermon on COVID-19 and her beliefs about COVID-19 and, you know, all the religious rituals that everyone has to do, like wear a mask and get vaccines, and, you know, if you don't believe in vaccines, then you have to give a religious exemption, which is actually illegal. And I will be going into that, something that the Liberty Council wrote. They say that questioning the orthodoxy of sincerely held religious beliefs or requiring a clergy place of worship or third party to agree with or affirm such religious beliefs is unlawful. And I'll just go over some of the highlights. Title VII, Protections Extend to Non-Religious Beliefs If Related to Morality, Ultimate Ideas About Life, Purpose, and Death. The premises of these questions that an employee's current request for religious accommodation must be consistent with the employee's prior health decisions and religious understandings or must be acknowledged by a person other than that employee are legally invalid premises for deciding religious accommodation requests, and any denial based on such premises violates Title VII. So for anyone that's asking for proof of vaccination and as an alternative, a religious exemption is violating Title VII. Undoubtedly, membership in an organized religious denomination, especially one with a specific covenant forbidding members to work on Sunday, would simplify the problem of identifying sincerely held religious beliefs, but we reject the notion that the claim, the protection for sincerely held religious beliefs, one must be responding to the commands of a particular religious organization. So what they're saying there is that just because, you know...
You have 10 seconds.
Like a standard religious organization like Christianity, where not everybody, you know, believes in vaccines, and some people do believe in vaccines, that it's their right to not have to prove their religious beliefs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, this is Gabrielle, the trip too. I have a few questions. With a booster being needed and it being a known fact that the vaccinated can spread COVID, why are therapeutics still not being discussed? Ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine have been politicized even though they work, but there are some on-label items that also work, like pegasins, dexamethasone, IV vitamin C, that are used in some hospitals successfully, yet we hear nothing but the shot in terms of how to treat COVID. And the goal should be to help prevent patients from ever needing the hospital, right? That's one question. The next question is, there was a slide on vaccinated versus unvaccinated for hospitalization and death rates. Where are those that are within 14 days of a shot included? Which column do they fall in? Hospital workers are saying that they follow CDC guidance to count those individuals as unvaccinated, and then, but per the county misinformation resolution, shot reactions aren't a thing. So are the vax getting COVID and still needing medical help? How is that being tracked? It would be nice to see proof by adding a third category of within 14 days of a shot. That would be easy enough to add to the reporting data by hospitals, and that would help solidify the point, right? If there's no shot reaction happening, that would help prove it, right? So it would be nice to see a third column there so we can differentiate, because they're not technically unvaccinated and they're not technically vaccinated by CDC policies. The third thing is I'm asking if an investigation is being launched on whether hospitals are reporting to VAERS, as they are mandated to do, if you check the VAERS website, with the Project Veritas report coming out and local whistleblowers that have been saying that VAERS is not being reported. So I'm asking, since the county's position is that VAERS is not credible or it's only the public filing, is it possible that the public is filing because the hospitals are not? So I'm requesting that an investigation be launched into that. The county has taken a stance of being the ones that guide what is misinformation and not. Thank you. Saying what is misinformation and not, so we're going to hold you accountable to prove that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, please send the last caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yeah, I want to go back to the second doctor who called in to this stream of public comments and basically thank this board for inviting him to speak here. And I'd just have to ask, was he invited by somebody on this board? Who on earth would like, would invite this person to give testimony on, like, on conspiracy theories like this, other than the one supervisor who voted against a public declaration of the scientific information that this county notes? Too far. If you're, I can't help but notice that it's pretty obvious to explain that you or friends of yours seem to be organizing these repeated public comment campaigns every time during COVID-19 response items on the agenda. And then you allow them to basically verbally abuse and harass your public, your public health officer, your employee on a routine basis without any solid pushback until somebody says something just outright racist, even though most of their commentary is kind of veiled racism, because it doesn't really consider the disparate impacts of COVID-19 in any of their comments. But to the point of you organizing a public campaign to, like, to influence this board's decision-making and also public critique, I wonder how, like, whether or not that might violate the fair, the fair political practices, which is laws or any, any kind of other political laws in California. I'm just going to point that stuff out, because half of the stuff I keep hearing is just like, minority opinions I don't really hear on any scale in any kind of mainstream, public media, or even independent media. And there's a lot of independent media. I realize that 90% of...
You have 10 seconds.
Two is controlled by just five corporations, so good luck getting through there with half fake conspiracy theories, but there's plenty of independent media sources that you could pitch these, this data to, that if even they're not picking it up, you got to think, maybe our ideas just aren't that found, that well-founded. Maybe the consensus...
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Yes, thank you for, again, replay, again, just showing how terrible you are. Fuck you.
Thank you.
That concludes your public comments. That concludes your public comments.
Okay, our public comments are completed. And I had a question for Dr. Casirier on the early treatment, because there's, I know there's a lot of talk about these medications that I guess are considered off-label. And I've read some articles, and I can't remember the names of the medications, but I've, and some doctors have said they're, you know, that these are the best, you know, ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine, and certain others are the best antiviral, you know, early treatment to keep people out of the hospital. But I've also heard that there are some on-label early treatment medications that can be used successfully. And I was wondering, I don't know why the off-label can't be used, but I wonder if there's a way that we can find a way to promote early treatment so that, you know, when winter comes and the flu season comes, we can reduce the number of hospitalizations for people and put a campaign together for early treatments to treat people. And I wonder how you feel about helping us do that? Just look into it.
So there is a process for approval of medications, and that is through the FDA. I do not have the power to start promoting medications that are not approved by the CDPH or the FDA. I did when one of the doctors first contacted me and gave me some information. I did give it to our infectious disease doctors, who I trust, we've worked with them for a long time, they're very knowledgeable. And because in public health, we're not on the treatment side, we're on the prevention side. So it's the hospitals and the doctors in the clinics that are doing the treatment. And all the infectious disease doctors that I talked to and provided the information, they said that the articles that are out there lack some of the vigor of a controlled study. So it's very difficult to prove whether these treatments that are being promoted are effective or not. We did receive information from the CDC alerting us to the problem of ivermectin and people buying ivermectin from stores, and because it's also used for livestock and self-medicating. And I think there is a danger there, because we have had some people get poisoning as a result of taking these medications. These medications are very strong, they're not over the counter, and also using formulation that is meant for livestock, I think also causes a lot of risk. So I think that people do need to go to the doctor if they are seeking treatment. We have a lot of doctors who have been treating COVID-19 patients. And right now, the treatments that are approved are the monoclonal antibody infusions that are available at several hospitals and clinics. And then also, there's also the remdesivir that has been used for treatment. Beyond that, I would have to defer to the infectious disease doctors, because their field is in treatment.
And Dr. Casirier and I had a text exchange, and a lot of questions have come up. And we do have a frequently asked questions document on our public health website, and we'll make sure that some of the questions that came up today get answered within that document as well.
Yeah, I've heard about the problem with the ivermectin and the, I guess, the veterinary medication and people self-medicating. And I have talked to doctors about it, and they have said, you know, you should be treated by a physician and seen in their office, because, you know, the ivermectin is by weight, and if you're giving ivermectin for a horse, I mean, who knows? I mean, I can see where that could happen. The other thing I wanted to ask you, where would we go if we wanted to, you know, find out what are the, you know, protocols in our local hospitals for early treatment to keep people out of the hospital? Who would we call to look into that?
I work closely with the infectious disease doctors. And in fact, Dr. Cohen from UC Davis has been on the community forum calls with me to answer questions that people have about vaccinations and about treatment as well. I don't know if they would want to...
What was his name?
Come in and talk about it. His name is Dr. Stuart Cohen.
Cohen, K-O-H-E-N, or C-O-H-E-N?
Yes. He has been on the community forum calls with me that we are currently having monthly, and he's made himself available to answer questions from the community.
Okay, and then I have one more question regarding natural immunity. There are some people recommending, I guess, that if you've had COVID, you should not get the vaccine because you already have immunity. Is that your, is that your philosophy? Is that your...
No, that's not the recommendation from CDC. The thing about the natural immunity is sometimes the reaction from the body is not always uniform. And there have been people who have gotten COVID-19, and when they got the antibody test, they did not have antibodies. We have had people who have gotten COVID-19 twice. So that is the reason why the CDC does recommend that even for people that have had the disease, that they still go ahead and get vaccinated. I did ask about studies, research that has been done about the natural immunity, and I believe that is still ongoing. So I do not have anything to provide at this point in terms of what the numbers look like.
And why would they, why would they count a partial, you know, if someone who got one shot as not vaccinated?
If you look on our chart, we distinguish between fully vaccinated and not fully vaccinated. And there is a definition for those that are fully vaccinated. And the reason for that also is that if you are not fully vaccinated, that means that you are not getting the full protection. If you recall, the studies that came out at the beginning showed that for both Pfizer and Moderna, that the effectiveness was in the 90s. But if you have gotten only one shot, then it might be much lower than that, and that means that you're not getting the full protection.
And then lastly, I wonder if you can just comment on the VAERS and your take on the VAERS reporting. We're getting a lot, I'm getting a lot of feedback around the large number of vaccine deaths and injuries.
Right. And I believe I have provided information to the supervisors about the VAERS database. If anyone is interested in knowing the validity of that data, the best thing is to actually go on the website. They have a Q and A that talks about how the data is collected. And they state very clearly in there that this is an early warning system where people can put in information, and they have the CDC and FDA reviewing that information. And if they see that there might be a pattern that is developing, they actually go and request the data for those cases so that they can analyze more carefully. And if you recall, that was what happened when, at the time when they decided to pause the J and J while they studied whether there was complication with clotting. And so the VAERS database is important, but it is also important to point out that you can't just look at the sheer volume of the data in there to come to a conclusion. And actually, that is in the FAQs that the CDC provides. So because anybody can put information in there, and it's not verified until the CDC goes in and requests the hospital records, and then they're able to verify the information.
Is there a number of deaths? I mean, there's talk about, you know, the, oh gosh, I don't remember, the flu in the 70s where they had 50 deaths and they stopped the vaccine. What is the, is there a philosophy or a cutoff to, how many deaths and how many vaccine injuries before it's considered a problem?
Those decisions are made at the CDC and FDA level, so I cannot speak to that. But what I can say is they do have a process for reviewing. And that is what happened when they reviewed the J and J, and they did put a pause while they did an in-depth review of the cases that had been reported to make a determination as to how frequently that complication was occurring, and whether there was still a value to being able to get vaccinated. I think one thing to point out is that we have millions of individuals that have been vaccinated with no complications. And so those are things that need to be taken into consideration as well. One thing I also want to point out about the natural immunity is that there is an inherent risk with telling people that, okay, you just need to get the disease and you'll be okay, because we don't know who is going to get the severe disease. And even for those that don't get severe disease, they still get complications such as what we call the long-hauler syndrome, where they end up with fatigue or brain fog. So all of those are things that you are taking as a risk. And of course, there's a severe complication of hospitalization and death. So those are all risks with getting the natural immunity. So with the vaccine, you get the antibody response without the risk of getting the disease.
How do we know if we have COVID-19 or Delta or one of the other variants? I mean, how do we, because COVID-19 was last year, Delta is this year.
So Delta is a variant of COVID-19. Basically, the thing about this virus is that it changes every single time it replicates, and that's part of the reason why we try to get the numbers as low as possible, because the more it replicates, the higher the chances of it mutating and creating additional variants. And so there are variants that are being monitored at the state and CDC level. And so they provide us with information on that. The way that you can tell what variant a person has, there's an additional testing that's done called genetic sequencing. Right now, we have to send that to the state in order to get results for genetic sequencing. It's more like getting a fingerprint, because each of these variants has a different genetic code. So right now, from the tests that we send, over 90% of the results that we get from the genetic sequencing, they're all the Delta variant. So that's why you're hearing us talk a lot about the Delta, because that is the predominant variant right now. And that's why you're seeing some of the impacts that we've talked about, where we've said that it tends to impact younger population than we have seen in previous surges.
Thank you, Dr. Casirier, and thank you for the board for indulging me. I often put everyone else first, and I guess I had questions, and I appreciate your patience. And Supervisor Serna had a question, but he left. And so I don't see anyone else in the queue. And I don't believe we have any other public comments. And so I want to thank you, Dr. Casirier, for your very informative update, and appreciate yours also. Siobhan Kassari.
Thank you.
And so I guess we can move on to the next item.
Okay. That would be the county executive comments, item 31.
No comments today. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now it's your comments.
And I don't see anyone in the queue, and so...
I'm sorry, I'm in the queue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Real briefly, you know, several months ago, we talked a little bit about the situation with aggressive driving and sideshows in Sacramento County, and talked a little bit about how the Highway Patrol handles a large portion of the traffic enforcement, traffic-related jurisdiction in the county. I've been working with the CHP's Valley Division, which oversees Sacramento Counties and several other counties in the area. And they're forming, they're starting a new initiative to target aggressive driving, sideshows, and to do a kind of a Sacramento County-centric POP program for traffic enforcement. So I'm going to be asking our county executive if maybe I can get the Highway Patrol to come and a representative from the CHP to come and maybe give a very brief presentation to the board. I think that might be helpful to us. And the other thing is, I think a few weeks ago, we received a presentation from our district attorney, Schubert, about fentanyl. And I just want to thank Siobhan. I know that you're working with the DA's office on that educational campaign. And I think the DA's office is going to be doing a public outreach campaign on the north steps of the Capitol on October 6th. So I believe we'll all be getting a little more information about that. Is that right, Siobhan? Oh. Oh, November 6th? Oh, well, we have, okay. Well, we have plenty of time then. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. And Supervisor Natoli.
Just for Supervisor Desmond, you're having a workshop tomorrow night? Or you're not having a community forum? You might want to announce that. I think, I know I've...
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. Supervisor Natoli, yes. So I'm having a forum. It's not going to, it's more of an informational Zoom webinar about, you know, how we, the county, and the feds, and the resettlement agencies are all preparing to welcome the Afghan refugees. And as you all know, Arden Arcade in District 3 has a very large population of Afghan refugees, which is really, you know, improves the rich tapestry of my district. Very proud of that. But we also have an obligation to make sure we provide them with the resources they need to succeed. So thank you. That's going to be tomorrow evening at 5:30 PM. And our illustrious Bruce Wagstaff and some of his staff will certainly be there to contribute to the conversation. So I think it'll be a really good first webinar to just kind of tell some folks what we're doing, what they can expect, and how they can help. So thank you.
How do people get information about how to tune into that?
If they, if they just go to our Board of Supervisors' website and go to my page, we'll have information there about it. Thank you.
Great. Wow, that sounds interesting. Thank you.
Thank you for that shameless plug, Mr. Natoli.
That was a good shameless...
What do you got going on District 2? You want to tell us about, Mr. Kennedy?
Okay, well, that concludes our business for the day, and this meeting is adjourned.